The Committee of the Whole of City Council, January 25th, and asked for a roll call.
Jacobson, Finnukin.
Here.
Markort.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Sixth present.
Thank you. We have considerations before us this evening, starting with Popular Annual Financial Report. The city manager, if you wish to introduce.
Sure, we'll kick it off. We're going to have Management Analyst Jared Hyde and our Management Intern Emily Tips. We're going to give a presentation tonight on the PAFR, Popular Annual Financial Report, more commonly referred to as the PAFR. With that, I will turn it over to them.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you may recall, last year, city staff undertook the task of putting together what's known as a Popular Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year 14. This report is essentially a condensed version of what you may know as the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFR. The idea of the PAFR is to make the city's finances and its situation more easily understandable for the general public, because frankly, the CAFR is not a very easy-to-read document. So, in an effort to be more transparent with our finances for the general public, we undertook creating the PAFR last year. We continued that this year, and I would also note that last year, we did win the award for the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial Reporting. So with that, I will turn it over to Management Intern Emily Tips to go into the more details with this year's PAFR.
So, the beginning of the PAFR, it goes over the highlights of the city's financials as a whole for the year, and it goes over information such as the local economy, the net position, government activities, business activities, the general fund, capital assets, debt services, and also the top employers for the city, which you'll see on the PowerPoint slide. Originally, the city budgeted for $543,754 decrease to the general fund balance, and due to revised revenue and expenditures projections, the final budget called for a surplus of $843,754 to the general fund balance. The actual results for FY15 indicated an increase of $1,076,821, and this was due to positive variances for both the amended revenues and also the amended expenditures. So often, one of the questions the city is asked in terms of the financial condition is, is the city as a whole better off or worse off as the year's activities? And how the city answers this question is by something called the net position. The statement of net position functions as a summary balance sheet, revealing the total amount of cash, investments, and receivables against what is owed. All of the capital assets are listed at their current value, and also non-current liabilities such as pension obligations. And then, year over year, the differences in the net assets can be helpful indicators about the fiscal condition of the city. So this table illustrates the net position. The table combines information about the city's assets and liabilities. The statement distinguishes between government activities, which would be things such as general government, public safety, highways and streets, and also economic development, from business-type activities. So the net position, the total net position for the city of DeKalb decreased from $169.8 million in FY14 to $114 million in FY15. For governmental activities, the net position decreased by 5.8, or 58.8, excuse me, million due primarily to the Government Accounting Standards Board Statement 68, and this statement requires the city to show their full net pension liability on the government-wide statement. The business activities increased by 3 million, and this was mainly due to the completion of the Airport Runway Project, and also the debt service payments that the city paid over the year. Also included in the PAFR is information about the revenues, so it talks about information such as sales tax, property tax, DAV, and also the overall general fund revenues for the city. So the majority of the city's services are financed through taxes at about 50%, intergovernmental at about 37%, and charges for services at about 6%. The total governmental fund revenue for FY15 was $33,77,442. And also included in the PAFR this year, that was an addition from last year, is, and the revenue and expenditures from 2011 to 2015, so you can see the difference over the years. As I briefly mentioned, as, also included is the overall expenditures, and in addition to that, it gives a breakdown or a piece of the pie that each department holds. The typical, largest general fund expenditure category relates to public safety, and this total for FY15, $20,433,722, or about 64% of all expenditures. Other significant categories include general government at about 23%, and community development at about 12%. Legislative expenditures and capital outlay, both were at 1% of their portion of the pie. Finance and administrative were both at 5%. Community development and public works, as well as support services, were at 12%. Fire expenditures were at about 30%, and police expenditures at 35%. The last thing covered in the PAFR is municipal debt. In 2014, the city refinanced its debt, and this saved the city $207,156. The long-term debt went from $107,974,537 in FY14 to $117,655,506 in FY15. And the chart in the PowerPoint illustrates that the city, illustrates the city's total outstanding debt service, and how the city can expect it to be changed over time as we pay it off. And were the city to not issue any more debt, the city would be completely paid off by the year 2033.
So, that concludes our presentation, our summary of the summary, if you will, of the PAFR. The PAFR document, as long as its parent document, the CAFR, is available on the city's website under the Finance Department's page, and with that, we're open to any questions you might have.
Jared and Emily, thank you for the overview of the annual report this evening. Are there questions for either Jared or Emily at this point? Hearing none, I'll just thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
At this time, thank you very much. And these will be available, print and copy will be downstairs in the lobby.
I believe we always have them. I'm going to look at Kathy. We always have some copies at the front copy, front counter, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Moving to the request for proposal for Bridge and Culvert Inspection Service. I assume.
We'll turn it over to City Engineer John Liskowski.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. This item is the request to send out, to distribute a proposal for Bridge Inspection and Culvert Services. This is part of the larger QBS process, the qualifications-based selection process, so this is the second step in that process. The initial step is submitting the RFQs out to qualified firms, so the request for qualifications. When we did that in February 2014, we got 15, there, we identified 15 projects, 27 firms responded, 10 firms requested to be considered for this, these consulting services, and now we've narrowed down the list of qualified firms to three or four. So the next step is to, if the proposal is distributed or approved, we would distribute this proposal to these three or four different consulting engineering firms. We'd ask that they return that proposal by March 4th, and we would schedule interviews with them on March 8th, 9th, and 10th. In that interview process, then, we would ask some questions germane to the project and get an understanding of which consulting firm produced the most qualified candidate. At that time, we would take that recommendation and bring it before the City Council, at which time, the City Council would be able to consider whether or not they want to move forward with the project. At this time, this item has no financial implications, it's simply the distribution of the RFP. When we make a recommendation and discuss scope and cost, at the next meeting, then, that will be presented to the City Council for consideration. So, the National Bridge Inspection Program in general is a program where the federal government has mandated that certain standards are followed for inspection procedures, and the state government has then administration authority from these regulations to ask the municipalities to review the different bridge structures and culverts in town. So, what we would do is, when, we are going to identify which bridges need to be evaluated. In this case, it's all the bridges in town, and they are evaluated on a two- or four-year cycle, and it just so happens that all of these bridges qualify for this next cycle in 2016. The difference with this proposal to past proposals is that we're including culverts now. So the difference between a bridge and a culvert, a bridge conveys traffic over some obstacle, whether it be train tracks or a river, a culvert conveys water beneath traffic. So, we're analyzing these culverts to see if they have the structural integrity and if they're in good shape to convey the traffic loads that they're intended to. So we're anticipating that this would be a benchmark study for the culverts. We wouldn't be doing this on a regular two-year or four-year cycle, it'd be maybe more of a six- or eight-year cycle. Now, the advantage to performing these inspections with, and getting the results to IDOT, is that it identifies which bridges are in need of repair, and it can lend to the argument of leveraging funds for these bridge replacements. And bridge replacements could be in the tens of, or a $10 million project, if IDOT were to get involved, they would cover about 90% of that cost, leaving the city with about $1 million. So, at this time, this is a request to distribute that proposal, and if you have any questions about the process or the proposal, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
All right, Noriko.
Is there a federal standard for inspecting the culverts, like the bridges?
You know what, I may ask for a little help from the project implementation engineer, if you'd be willing to lend a support to me here. This is Mike Balling, Michael Balling. I believe that there is an IDOT or a state standard for it, but I think I'll let Mike elaborate more on that question.
IDOT has the practice of inspecting all their culverts if they're over the size of five foot. And they have, in the standard, they have a culvert form, just like a bridge form, and they have certain criteria that they look at to do that. And yes, they do have a federal kind of mandate to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of John? Mike?
On the table in here where it lists the bridges, what's the status mean? It's got 111, and then, just the one bridge has got a 2 next to it, is that a?
So that indicates that that street, or that bridge is rated lower than the others. So, what I should mention too, is a part of this RFP, we're going to be evaluating the weight limits that are allowed across these bridge. So, if a contractor were to come into town and request an oversized overweight permit, we check the route that he's going to be driving his truck over, and if he goes over a bridge, we specifically look at that bridge to see if he can take his load across that bridge. So, in this case, the status, the number 2 is indicating that that bridge is rated lower than the others, and that that one would be most likely the first one that we would have to replace or target for replacement in the future.
Other questions of John? Okay, hearing none, I presume, John, that you will then proceed with the request for proposal.
We would distribute those proposals out to the qualified firms, yes.
Okay. Very good. We'll look forward to the responses as those are received. Request for proposal for construction engineering services for the 2016 general street maintenance. John?
Again, this, this process is the exact same process as that which we used for the culvert inspection, so it's the qualified base selection process, QBS process. Again, 27 firms were evaluated as part of this process, 15 projects, and for this particular project for construction engineering services, 20 firms responded favorably and asked to be evaluated. Again, we shortlisted three to four candidates for this street and for this, for this project, and going forward, we'd ask at this time that they would respond by March 11th with their proposal, and then, interviews would be conducted on March 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, if the RFP were approved. So, what this RFP does is it's a component of the 2016 general maintenance project that we're going to be getting into in the next item, and what this does is it authorizes staff to look for construction engineering services, meaning somebody that would be evaluating the day-to-day operations of the construction project, so it would be anything from measuring the pay items that are associated with the project, collecting materials documentation, making sure that the concrete is strong enough. They'd be required to maintain a project diary and prepare weekly updates, and maybe even most important, probably, they're, we're asking this individual to communicate not only with staff and indicate what's going on, on a day-to-day project with the, on a day-to-day basis with the project, but also interacting with the residents and being courteous and explaining to them the timeframes and how these, the operation is going to impact them. At the end of the project, they'll be preparing a punch list, and then finally, they'll be developing as-built drawings for us. So, again, similar to the other RFP, there's no financial obligation at this point with this RFP, we're simply asking the three or four most qualified firms to respond, so we can interview them and evaluate their qualifications, and then, go forward with the recommendation for the City Council to consider at a meeting in April. So, if you have any questions regarding that proposal at this time, I'd be happy to address those now.
Questions for City Engineer Liskowski? Hearing none, we can proceed with that RFP as well, John.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then, the next item is Proposed Alley and Street List for Capital Improvement Program.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. So, you're probably all familiar how excited I get when I have the opportunity to talk about streets, so we're at that point again. We've made similar presentations at the Finance Advisory Committee, we've done them before here at the City Council, and so, I'm here to, to explain our 2016 general street maintenance project. And what this presentation is going to include is, it's going to explain some of the characteristics of the roadway, it's going to evaluate the methodology that the engineers use to formulate recommendations for street maintenance, and then, it's also going to explain the available funding sources for these roads. So, taking a look at the slides, we identified the purpose of street maintenance to be, or the purpose of this presentation, to make recommendations to the City Council so that they can make informed decisions on how they're expending the money that's available to us on the infrastructure project. The goal that we've identified in the Public Works Department is to maintain a safe road network that's accessible to citizens and visitors and promotes economic growth. So, to get into our road inventory, the roads in the city of DeKalb, the road network consists of 129 centerline miles, it's, that translates to 2.5 million square yards, which is roughly 5.5% of the entire surface area of the city of DeKalb. So it's a good, good amount of land area that we have. To, to look further into, into roads, I brought a core section of a road that I'll pass out that you can see. This is a section that was cored out of a bituminous road, and there's a yellow line on this core, and above the yellow line is, this shorter section is the surface of the road, below the yellow line is the binder or base layer of the asphalt. And then you'll see three dots on this core. If you look very closely at each dot, you'll see that there's a slight difference between each of the sections there, and that denotes a different time, point in time where a layer of asphalt was placed on the roadway surface at that time. So continuing on with the inventory of the roads, then, in the city of DeKalb, 97% of the roads are hot-mix asphalt or bituminous roads, and that's, that's a sample of the core mix that you have in your hands going down the dais right now. 1% of those is concrete roads, 1% is brick, and the remainder is micro-surface or steel-coated roads. So, how does the city's funded street maintenance program? There's, there's five different funding mechanisms that have, have been evaluated in this presentation, and I may comment just a little bit on each one of them. Grants as a funding mechanism is becoming more and more competitive, so there's a smaller pool of money, and more and more municipalities are chasing after this, the small amount of money. So, while there is money available to street maintenance projects, it's not a reliable source that we can focus on, on an annual basis. Tiff funding, one of the limitations we have with tiff funding is it's focused only in the small geographic area. So, a tiff fund can only be expended in that area, and outside that geographic area, you're not allowed to use those tiff funding, so it is limited in some sense. The local gas tax can be used all throughout town, there's typically about $400,000 allocated to street maintenance programs, to the street maintenance project. $50,000 of that goes to alleys, $50,000 of that goes to sidewalks, and the remaining 300 is dedicated to street maintenance itself. The street, state motor fuel tax of 1990, a little tongue-in-cheek with that, the reason I mention it's from 1990 is because the state hasn't increased the state motor fuel tax since 1990. So, the importance of that is that, that means that the revenue source we received has been continuous or flat since 1990. Now, if you consider the cost of construction and inflation, and, and that applies to almost anything you purchase, the cost of maintaining a road increases steadily over time. So what that means to us is that we no longer have that buying power with our state motor fuel tax money. We're only able to do, we're able to do a less amount of streets now than we had in the past. And the last funding source I put up there with a question mark was community development block grants. This is a source that staff has looked into in the past and looking into now to potentially supplement the maintenance project. It's not necessarily the case that this funding source would be able to fund an entire street or a roadway, but there may be a way to partner that funding in with the others to accomplish some of our street maintenance and overall infrastructure goals. So this, this chart is an illustration of the grants that we've received in the past. There were some good years we had in the mid-2000s, and then, recently, the grant sources have kind of dried up on us, so we are really having a tough time searching for them. We are looking for grants, and we have secured a small grant for the Highway Safety Improvement Program. It's the HSIP grant, they call it, it's about $19,000 to $20,000, around there, is the total amount. And that grant is going to be used for the, changing the signs on any gliden road to make them more reflective. So, the next, next slide shows the funding by source. So, from 1992 to the present, we look at the funding and how, how it's, it's been allocated to the road maintenance project. Prior to 19, prior to 2000, we didn't break the funding source up into its individual parts, so the blue lines are an aggregate total of this funding. But when you look at this illustration, you can see that where we've relied on our, our street maintenance funding has been a variety of sources, but it also can identify some of the trends in where we're currently looking for our funds. So, looking at this illustration, we can see that the state motor fuel tax, the red bars, we've kind of been less reliant on that and a little bit more reliant on the local gas tax and the tiff funds. Now, the next graph is kind of be a combination of both this, this illustration and the previous with the grants, and it's kind of a more dramatic photo of how, how reliant we were on grants. And you can see that the impact of what, when you include the grant funding in with the street maintenance, the vast impact that we've had with the grants on, on our street maintenance program. So, the next part of the presentation explains a little bit about how we've gone about evaluating our streets. So in the past, we used a methodology from the Asphalt Institute, and it was a subjective methodology that included engineers that would drive the streets and evaluate it based on a visual inspection, and they'd look at the cracking or the rutting, and then make their evaluation and recommendations based on that. The limitations of that methodology is obviously you don't have a real good understanding of what's happening below the surface. The, the cracking can give you clues, but it's never quite a certainty. So currently, what we're doing is we're using a company called Infrastructure Management Systems, and they're allowed, they're able, capable with their technology to drive a truck across the surface of the pavement using laser technology and determine the amount of cracking and the ruts in the surface, and that's one part of this pavement index. The second part is the other test that they perform, which is the subsurface test. Now this test evaluates how well that base is performing, which is a bit, bit of a bigger concern, because this component is rated, weighted a little bit more than the index of the surface. So there's two components. So, there's two components to the subsurface evaluation, and if we were to look at that core, one of the tests would rate how that total section of pavement is rating, from the top of that core to the very bottom. And the second number would then rate what's below the core, so the asphalt, or the sand, or the gravel, or, or the clay, whatever it might be. So, those two components provide us an understanding of how that base is performing. You combine that with the surface number, and you have your total pavement index. So, this gives us a comprehensive understanding of every single street throughout the city, and basically simplifies it down to a individual number. So, the next step, then, is the engineers take this data, and we broke it into categories. So, we've suggested that in the next chart, you'll see pie graphs, and it's gonna be red, yellow, and green. Red streets are streets that we rated from 0 to 59, yellow streets rate from 60 to 79, and red streets rate from 80 and above. Now, this table right here explains a little bit of how the pavements are beginning to deteriorate. In 2014, the data in 2014 is presented in a black number here, and at that time, we discovered that the, the overall pavement index number of the citywide network was at a 78. The 2015 data indicates it's a 73, and that's a pretty substantial decline in one year. So, a little bit later in the presentation, I'll get to exactly why that we observed that dramatic decline, but one of the main points here is to kind of look and see the, the individual changes between the black numbers and the red numbers. So, if you take a look at, say, scenario number five, we see that the differences from black is 78 minus 68, which would be a 10-point difference. Now, when you look at the red numbers, it's been a slight increase in that 73 minus 61 is 12. And the importance of this is that you're getting to see that over time, that difference is gonna keep growing if, if we're not maintaining our streets to main, to, to an adequate condition. So, taking a look at the pie charts, we see from 2014 that the, the data indicates that we're at a average pavement index of 78. At this point, we see that the, the number of roads in town, the majority of them, were at a satisfactory condition. 40% were pre-failing, and 9% were in the failing range. With the 2015 data, we, we found that a lot of those streets have slipped out of that satisfactory category into the pre-failing category to now make that category the largest at 54%. So, there's, there's a few reasons, then, why, why these categories have shifted like this, and one of them is that when we were rating, we were looking at the data from 2014, we saw that there were a lot of the streets in that green category were in the lower end of the range. So, from 80 to 100, more of them were in, say, 80 to 87 than were 87 and above. So, over time, those streets are gonna fall into this yellow category, and they're gonna make it a little bit bigger. Similarly, the roads in the yellow category are gonna slip into the red and, and create that category to get a little bit bigger. At the same time, while we're talking about the deterioration of the streets, you have to also consider that there's been a change in the streets that we did do maintenance on. So, from 2014 to 2015, we did perform maintenance on a number of roads. So, in that model, what we would do is we would change those numbers, whether it would be from the red category or the yellow category, and those would get boosted up to the green. So, on a year-to-year basis, there's gonna be that shift of roads falling into a different category, but also those moving up into a higher category. So, what you can see by kind of thinking about that concept of roads deteriorating and then being repaired, is that there's a greater shift in one direction right now. So, more, the categories at the bottom end of this pie chart are starting to expand. Now, one of the other reasons, and I think it's my next slide, that, that the, yeah, this is the popular curve that you've probably seen more than once, but this curve demonstrates why that pavement rating may be getting worse at, at a more rapid rate. And the reason for that is it's not a linear curve, it's not necessarily a gentle curve that goes from point A to point B, there is that category in the, in the latter half of the green and red section where the, the slope is really beginning to drop. So, at that point, when roads are in that area, we can expect their condition to deteriorate at a greater rate than would be up in the earlier sections of the pavement's life, lifetime. And this is an important graph that I always like pointing out, because what it demonstrates is the cost of maintaining streets. If you can maintain your roads while they're in that length of that green curve, you're gonna save money in the long run, because it takes less money to maintain the streets. At this point, you can extend that pavement life out into the future, whereas, once you get to the, to the red portions of this curve, you're gonna be spending about four, four times as much money as you would initially to maintain that road. So, this is what we have for a street maintenance budget this year, and it kind of explains, this illustrates the amount of money we have and what we spend out of the FY '16 budget. So, the funds that we've had money budgeted in were the state motor fuel tax budget, the tiff district number one, tiff district number two, and the local gas tax. So, the total budget was $1.5 million this year, and we have expended some of this money already in, in the fall to maintain the roads as well as the bridge. So, the two projects that we've already accomplished were the comprehensive patching project, and this accounted for $24,000 from the tiff district and $247,000, thereabouts, from local gas tax. In addition, we've also maintained the Peace Road Bridge where we had identified a large void forming under the, the approach to the bridge, and we, there was a repair that was really necessary to do, so in that case, we filled that void with concrete to, to buttress that, that potential settlement there. So, in tiff district number one, and in the following slides, you're gonna see kind of pictures of the streets that are illustrated on this table. And so, we have five streets that we've identified in the tiff district. The estimated cost is an estimate that the engineers prepared based on the IMS model. So, if we take a look at what does, so for instance, from Pine Street, from First Street to Forest Street, the estimated cost is $205,000 to do that road. So, if we take a look at, at that street, we see that it has a pavement index of 44, and the pavement's a little dark in this picture, but if you can make out, there's two areas in the driving lane, and, and they're starting to crack, and they call it alligator cracking, because it looks like the back of an alligator. So, typically, where your wheels are gonna drive down that pavement are where that alligator cracking is occurring, which means that's a lot of where the stress points are in this, on this road. So, that's an indication of, of a road that's gonna need some attention. It shows that there's cracking, water's now infiltrating into that pavement, and potentially leaking down to the base, where it's gonna cause some freezing thaw over the winter time and create a big, a bigger problem in the future. So, the cost of this project, to, to maintain it, is gonna be about $205,000. North 15th Street, also in this tiff district, has a pavement rating of 47. In this photograph, you'll see that there's some edge cracking that's beginning to alligator, and there's also transverse cracks that occur at a regular interval down the street, and these are cracks that are largely attributed to, to the weather, the freezing and thawing of, of the pavements. North 10th Street is, has a pavement index of 50. The cost, cost of this project is gonna be $117,000, and kind of the, the pattern you're seeing here is, from the initial street to the next streets that I get to, the pavement index is a little bit better than the street before it, so you're not gonna see as much cracking, but it's kind of like going back in time. So, if you started at the initial slide, that's gonna be the worst condition that you have, and coming back, as the pavement indexes go up, the distresses aren't gonna be nearly as bad. Lewis Street's the next street in this, in this tiff district that's gonna be addressed. Cracking is not quite as bad as the previous slides, however, there is some alligatoring occurring right under the, the word pavement in this slide, and there's longitudinal centerline cracking that's occurring as well. Lincoln Way is a, this slide, and I'm gonna have to apologize, in the presentation, when I distributed to the city council this slide, I had a, a error in it that's been corrected. On this slide, I, I had a picture from, I believe, it was Lewis, I think, I had duplicate pictures. So, if you're at home or you looked at the presentation in advance of this presentation, that, that was an error in this presentation. So, this is a small street, from John Street to Harrison Street. You can see that there's been some preventive maintenance already performed on this street with some crack filling as well as some patching, and that's probably one of these, the reasons that's, this street's held up a little bit better than some others. We, we have been able to do some preventive maintenance on it with crack filling as well as, as patching. So, in the tiff district number two, the, the only street that we've targeted was Taylor Street, the, it was from First Street to Forest Street. Total cost of the project is gonna be $331,000. This pave, this project has a pavement index of, of 28, and as you can see in this picture, you're gonna see that there's some alligator cracking in the right-hand wheel lane, there's some potholing occurring on the right-hand side, you can see that there's some water beginning to collect in the curb that's contributing to the deterioration of the base in a street like this. So, next funding source is motor fuel tax and the local gas tax. The streets that we're gonna look at with this motor fuel gas and local gas tax are Linden Place and Bermuda Court. The cost of repairing these streets is estimated at 60,000, 68,000, and 60,000, and we're estimating that the cost of the alley repair is gonna be $50,000. So, Linden Place has a pavement index of 39, it's gonna cost $68,000. There's a longitudinal crack going down the middle of the street, and there, underneath the garbage cans over there, although you can't see them, is some edge cracking occurring as well there. Bermuda Court, I apologize for the delay in the picture, you can tell that we have taken these recently, and so sometimes the, the pavement and the ice does obscure some of the, the visual effects of the photographs, but you can see that there has been some preventive patching on this street, there's some patch, patch mix that's been placed in the potholes, and there's additional cracking as well down the centerline of the road. The alley is one that's gonna be a unique project, part of this alley is in the floodplain, so we've identified where those limits are, and are, we've designed it in-house. This is one of the projects that we're gonna, well, the entire street maintenance project, actually, we're gonna be designing in-house, and this is one of those that we have the data from a previous program, and we're gonna be utilizing that data to go forward with the design. So, overall, and on this board to my left, is the streets that we're looking at for street maintenance paving. The, the next slide is simply a slide that highlights the alley that we have proposed, and on the board to my left is the, the street maintenance and alley inclusive. The board to my far left is, is a board that I don't have in my presentation, but I wanted to bring it to your attention, because I think it's one of the really neat tools that we have, utilizing some technology in the combined departments in the engineering and technology, or engineering division, but also in the information and technology division. This, this board here, and I'll have this in the lobby, maybe you could take a look at it in between changing meetings, but it identifies the water main breaks, the water main, it identifies fiber optic, and it identifies the CDBG and tiff areas on this map, as well as those streets that are at a pavement index of lower than 59. Now, the really neat thing about this board is it allows you to take a look at the city's infrastructure in aggregate. And this is something that the, the engineers and the, the Public Works Department in general has been doing in the past, but the, the engineering and, this technology allows us to identify it visually on a graph. So, what we can do is we can identify where there's been a lot of water main breaks, and see what kind of funding we can use to utilize, to repair that water main break. In addition, it allows us to look at a water main break section of road and say, okay, that has a bad pavement index number. And maybe it makes sense, if we're gonna do this pavement replacement project on this particular road, and there's been three or four water main breaks, you know, maybe we don't attack the water main. But if there's been quite a few, it'd be a good time to do both of those projects at the same time and kind of leverage that money and utilize the ability of that contractor in a single season. So, this is kind of just more for your information, but just a illustration of how we're utilizing GIS to the best of our abilities to try to identify the most cost-effective projects right now in the city of DeKalb. So, the last slide, then, overall, is a project summary, and I apologize for the print being a little small on this one, but these are the streets, then, that we've reviewed in this presentation, and that I am gonna be recommending for consideration for the city council to allow us to begin the design process and, and move forward with the project. So, this slide illustrates that we have $575,000 available in the tiff funds. The estimated cost of the total projects coming out of that fund are about $541,000. So, we're gonna be, we're estimating that the, we'll have a little bit of wiggle room in case bids come back a little high. If they do come back low, and they're lower than our number, we have the opportunity of either addressing additional streets, or maybe doing patch, patching in that particular tiff district. Similarly, in tiff district number two, Taylor Street, we have $400,000 allocated, and there's $331,000 that's estimated to be used. And similar to tiff fund 13, the same procedure would be addressed. If, if the bids come back better than this number, then we're gonna have extra money to either address another street in that area, or we're gonna be able to do some additional pavement maintenance in perhaps the form of pa, patching or, or curb repairs. The Fund 10, the MFT Fund and the local gas tax identifies Linden Place and Bermuda Court at a total of $128,000. This is one of those areas where we're crossing our fingers that bids come back a little better than they are. We have, in that column, you'll see that there's $100,000 from MFT funding this and $71,000 from the local gas tax. So, looking at it, it would appear that there's $171,000 in total for this project, but there is $50,000 in this sum that goes towards sidewalks. So, the reality is there's $121,000 available, so we're about $7,000 short, but if bids come back good, we'd still like to do these streets. If they don't, what we would consider is maybe shifting $7,000 of that sidewalk money into this fund, so we can get the, that road completed. And finally, then, is the, the alley that we're going to resurface or, or repair this time, and it's gonna be Clifford Drive from Wood Street to Glidden Street. The estimated cost is $50,000, and that's about what we have, well, that's exactly what we have for funds available. So, that's the conclusion of the street maintenance project presentation for this year. If you do have any questions, I'm available, and Mike, Michael Balling, the project implementation engineer, is also here, and I, I would like to recognize his contribution to this presentation, because it was a lot of work, and, and he put a lot of effort into a lot of the modeling, so.
Thank you, John. Yeah, Michael. Alderman Norreco.
I had raised a question to you regarding a certain section of street in Ward 5, and found out the low rating, but then you gave a good explanation of why that stretch wasn't, you know, showing up on this list, acknowledging that there are issues with it. And I think it would be useful if you could just reiterate for the general audience, you know, the funding dollars and also, you know, how you approach a street project, that it isn't just, well, this looks bad, we're gonna do this, you know, taking into consideration, you know, the whole stretch and so forth, so.
Yeah, so, so what it, what it is, is when we have, we have data on every segment in town, every single block, and in aggregate, we usually look at these blocks in what we call sections, so it'd be more than just one block at a time. So, there may be a segment of road that has a pavement index of 78, and then a pavement index of 41, and then a pavement index of 78, and it continues at a fairly high pavement index. Now, that 41, that may be much lower than a lot of the other streets in town, but the way you approach it is you kind of look at it as, that's an individual segment that you would approach in a group of segments, because it's not gonna make a lot of sense to, cost-effectively to attack just one individual segment out of a group. So, in the instance that Alderman Norreco, or Alderperson Norreco brought to my attention, there was a, there was a cul-de-sac in question, Bermuda Court, and we were looking at Second Street as it was going by Lincoln Elementary School. And there was a segment of roadway within that length that was, that was very poor, but I explained that we felt that Bermuda Court was a better cost, a more cost-effective solution at that time, because we could address the entire court and never have to go back to that area, because it was a court where that was really deteriorated, but it wasn't adjacent to a street that, that was necessarily in a bad condition. And so, in those instances, we would like to address that as a point repair, kind of, and get that on the street maintenance program and rehabilitated. And whereas, we look at the segments on a longer stretch of highway in aggregate to see where it would make more sense to do the entire operation at once. And one of the other limitations that always comes into play, then, is the funding source. So, sometimes, we do see these streets that have low pavement indexes, and the limitation is that they're outside of the, of the tiff funds. So, for instance, after we got done doing our, our patching So, for instance, after we got done doing our, our patching program and our, and our bridge repair, out of the four, three hundred thousand dollars allocated for street maintenance, we only did have that a hundred thousand dollars remaining. So, that wasn't really enough money to do a significant amount of roads outside that TIF district. And so instead, we were, or inside the, I'm sorry, yeah, to do, address the roads outside the TIF district. So if a certain road has a very low pavement index, it could be the case that it's falling in, outside the TIF district, and we simply just don't have the money in the budget to address those repairs at the time. Was that kind of what I put in the email?
Yes, it is. And, and so it basically boils down to, you have to balance all the different factors. And I certainly think, you know, for the average citizen, you know, like for me, I'm like, well, this section needs to be, you know, this is really bad, and I'm tripping when I cross the street and so forth. And you're really looking at, you know, the funding and the construction methodology and so forth, so.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Alderman Baker.
This is so impressive that you're able to go through this analytically like you're doing and, and come up with a, a plan that, and I remember fifteen years ago, and even before I was on the council, it seemed rather arbitrary. And even longer than that, when the ward system sometimes had, well, before the ward system, there might be three aldermen that lived up there off of North First Street, and they got all new roads regularly. Now that we're, but, the reason I brought that up is that you just answered the question that everyone up here needs to really search their soul and listen to their constituents. Kate, the roads in Fifth Ward need to be addressed if they're not in the TIF. We're not allocating enough money in the budget. He's, he's delivering to us within his budget what he can do. But, but I heard the number a hundred thousand is left over after you deal with the TIF. That's the problem. And what I want to stress is that, that certainly by next year, if we're not going to do it, this year's budget coming up, we need to start thinking about putting much more money out of the general fund into these, the maintenance of these roads, or you're just going to end up replacing roads. So, don't be penny wise and dollar foolish is, is the bottom line. What I would like to see everyone up here think about, and I'm ready to do it immediately if everyone can understand the need for it the way I see it, and that's to super use, or should we say use, or double down, the TIF is going to disappear. So let's take everything within the TIF and put our money there unless we come up with a really good project that's going to give us a better return than, to the city than the cost of when that TIF disappears, of then having to take it out of the general fund, because that TIF money won't be there anymore. The only way you can, you can, when the TIF disappears, is to go to all the taxing bodies and cut a side contract like a TIF, but it's not a TIF. It can still be done, and it, and I'm sure it's done in communities that don't have the home rule, or better yet, don't have the TIF, where, where you have, but, but are you necessarily going to get the school district to want to pave a street that isn't near their school? Maybe you're not going to be able to do that in the future. So if we can start thinking about spending that TIF money where it really needs to be spent, on the infrastructure and roads, and not using our general fund there, but then also allocating a number, and I'm going to pick five hundred thousand extra because Ron Naylor, who sat where you are sitting now for years, always said, let's not rob the motor fuel tax of the five hundred thousand and put it in the general fund. It needs to be spent on streets. He was the only one preaching that, but in the end, he was right. And that's, that's really what we need to do now, is just, just take a, a number, and I'm not sure the five hundred thousand's enough, and start spending that out of the general fund and getting used to that. And then going back and just, before the TIFs disappear, get all those roads rebuilt, obviously working with the oldest, but to leave a road like was just mentioned, that may be a very low rating, and obviously is going to have to be rebuilt unless they get in on it now and put it off until it has to be rebuilt, may not be the smartest thing. It's penny wise and dollar foolish. Sure, it gets us through this year within that budgeted amount, but it's kicking the can down the road of not having to pay that same amount, but maybe double or triple or five times that amount. And that's my concern right now, is, is all the time I've been up here until recently, we thought we were doing fine, and obviously we weren't. And the recently was when we got this report back that said we really need to spend nine million, not three hundred thousand, on roads, or, or what number, what are we spending total right now, three hundred or five hundred?
Nine hundred, or nine million a year, I think, is the scenario.
That's what we need to spend.
Yeah.
And, and what are we actually spending this time?
We're going to be at one point five this year.
Okay. I, I think the point is made by John's numbers, not me. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Other questions of John on the street maintenance? We will be coming back to the street maintenance issue at a future council meeting.
I think what City Engineer Luskowski is looking for is direction or consensus to move forward in order to bid out this project, and is seeking direction if you have any changes on the list of streets that are included for your review tonight.
So, hearing that, are there any changes that Alderman would like to recommend to City Engineer at this time? Alderman Baker.
By next year, I'm sure both the Knowles and Devenure Farms, they've always been hurting for the last, at least, five years, need, need another look. And maybe, the thing to keep in mind is that now is the time of year to bid that stuff out. You're going to get a decent bid. We can't change our mind in June and ask John to come up with anything because contractors might double their cost or one and a half times, hoping not to get it, but figuring they'll, they'll do it if they have to.
Okay.
Kate, do you want to have your road added now?
Well, I defer to the professional expertise, and I'll just be careful crossing the street.
Other input at this point, is there consensus then for City Engineer to pursue the proposed alley and street list for capital improvements? I'm seeing heads nodding. Okay. All right. Thank you. Moving to comprehensive parking regulation study, Phase Three.
That's also me. Give me one second, I'll set these exhibits up. Doug's going to help me. The, maybe I'll start giving you an overview of the presentation while, while Doug's assembling the exhibits. The, here, okay. The Parking Regulation Study, this is the third phase of this project. And so, initially, when we started looking at parking regulations, we realized that there's a, a lot of times, there's requests from citizens or business owners or, or various members of the community to take a look at parking regulations and, and change them as a result of some, some need that they may have. Over time, what's happened is that these parking regulations have kind of stacked on top of each other. And so, as new regulations were placed, they weren't always cognizant of the regulations prior to them. So, we ended up with some inconsistencies in the parking regulations. And so, what Doug and I have done is, we've evaluated the ordinance, and we looked at every single ordinance in this municipal code that applied to parking regulations, and then placed it on a GIS map. And what that enabled us to do is see where these parking regulations line up on a particular street. And by looking at this map, you could visually see then where there's overlap and where there might be inconsistency. The second part of the, of the project was bringing these inconsistency before the Neighborhood Services Committee. Now, the Neighborhood Services Committee took, took one look at this parking regulation study, and they said, okay, we're going to need to form a subcommittee for this one. So the Parking Regulation Subcommittee was formed, and it consisted of members of the Fire Department and Police Department, the Engineering Division was present, Public Works Department, as well as Community Development and Information and Technology. So, these, the, at that point, what we looked at was the categories, the number of categories we had for parking regulations. So, there were sixty-four when we started out at the outset of this. And we've, by looking at them and consolidating them, we were able to get them from sixty-four down to twenty-four. And the advantage of having less parking regulations is kind of twofold. It's, it's for the citizens and the visitors that are coming to our town, there's, it provides greater consistency by reducing the number of parking regulations there are. So, from that perspective, it makes it a little bit easier to understand when you're driving around downtown DeKalb, or even on one of the local roads, where you can and cannot park. And in addition to that, it, it's a little more difficult of the Police Department to continually try to keep up with which parking regulation applies to which street and who's legally parked and who's not. In addition to that, there's also a benefit from the Public Works side because we don't have to maintain as large of an inventory of signs to take down or make and put in their place. So, taking a look at the exhibits then, there's four exhibits, and they begin in page ninety-three of your agenda packet. And I'll explain a little bit about each exhibit. Exhibit one is the existing condition. And what this exhibit is, is the way the parking regulations currently exist in the city today. So, looking at this parking, this exhibit, we see that there's a lot of overlapping lines on this exhibit. And immediately, we see that on Exhibit One, there's a red line and a green line on the north, north end of Locust Street. And the one regulation says no parking anytime, and the green line, it says no parking, two AM to six AM. So if you consider those two regulations, it's redundant. There's really, it's unnecessary to have that parking regulation from two AM to six AM in that particular instance. So, what we did in Exhibit Two is we suggested ways of how this redundancy or these inconsistencies could be remedied. So, the dash line represents where the, the parking exhibit used to be, or the parking regulation used to be, and how we modified then the length of that parking regulation to be more consistent. And at that point, on the north side then, we have a longer section of no parking anytime in the form of the red line. And we have two lines that are still overlapping. There's a green line and a blue line. And those lines are actually complementary. Those parking regulations state that there's no parking between two AM and six AM, and then the blue line indicates that's fifteen-minute parking. So there's a time constraint. So, in that sense, there may be a business owner who has clients that are just popping in and out, and it's beneficial for them to have that smaller timeframe to keep people moving in and out of that parking space. Now, the third, third exhibit corresponds to the second phase of our parking regulation study. And that was the portion where we were consolidating these parking regulations. So when we looked at the, the parking regulations from a consolidation point of view, we noticed that there's eight-hour parking regulations that, that weren't really that beneficial. An eight-hour parking window is a really long time if you're considering parking on a street. So, we were thinking that maybe the origin, the, the history behind it was for, maybe there was a, a shift worker that was working that eight-hour period of time, and they wanted to allow him to park for eight hours. The, the problem with having an eight-hour parking regulation is that it's just simply not really that enforceable. If, if you consider a police officer that was maybe in the middle of his shift and taking a look at an eight-hour parking regulation, obviously there's no time for him to see if that parking regulation was actually violated. In that situation, he would have to either relay the information to somebody on the next shift and, and communicate to them that, that this is something of need. So, the Parking Regulation Subcommittee looked at this regulation and said, you know, is this really beneficial? Is there, is there a need for this specific parking regulation? And at this point, we, we decided that no, there probably isn't, and so we deleted it. Now, looking at the fifteen-minute parking, there were some areas in town where there was fifteen-minute parking only on certain days, so maybe Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And then there was a fifteen-minute parking regulation only Tuesday, Thursday. And then there was one on just the weekends. So, and those, in that situation, we consolidated those parking regulations to just fifteen minutes at any time. And it just made sense to consolidate and simplify that regulation. So the final, and final exhibit we have is Exhibit Four, and it shows what the results of that resolving these inconsistencies ended up with, and, and consolidating the parking ordinance. And the visual illustration is a little bit more compelling when you see that the amount of parking regulations have been reduced and they're a little bit more consistent. So that's kind of where we're at right now. And the exciting part, I think, now of the parking regulation study begins at this point because what we're doing is the next step is working through the City Manager's office. We're going to be working at trying to get some, a, a public meeting for each ward. So we're going to ask that there's a, a member of each ward and the alderman from that ward schedule a public meeting at the City Council, at the City Chambers, where both Doug and I would be present, and we could field the input from the community members on the parking regulations that directly impact them. So, I'm not stating that everybody's wishes are going to be granted with parking regulations. You're not necessarily going to show up and say, there's a teenage driver across the street from me, and I just can't stand in parking over there, can you place a no parking sign in front of that individual's house? You're not going to get that wish. But what we are going to do is consider that input that you bring to this meeting along with the input of the other departments, the Police and Fire, so we can understand what the needs are of the community. And so it's not just going to be this one meeting. We're also going to offer to those individuals who aren't able to participate in that one meeting, for a window of time on the city website, we're going to have the parking maps available for commentary, so we can collect input from everybody in your ward, and then present all these comments at the time of, of the analysis of that individual ward. So, at the outset of this entire project, we're hoping by the end of the year, after working with all the wards and citizens, we'll have a more functional parking regulations that, that can be enjoyed by citizens and, and business people and the community. So, that, that's where we're at right now, and what, what we would be looking for then is your cooperation in trying to schedule a meeting with, with each, each of the aldermen in, in the, in the future here. And if there's any questions on the exhibits, here to my left, Doug Eaton, who's done an awful lot of work on, on these exhibits, is also here to answer your questions.
Alderman Baker.
The Sixth Ward used to encompass both the Knowles and Devenure Farms, and I spent dozens and dozens of hours actually meeting with people on an individual basis and then with engineering. And I'd venture to bet there might not be any input necessary for either of the Sixth or Seventh Ward. So I guess maybe what I'm suggesting is that you put this up there on the website and we all spread the word somehow.
Yeah.
Maybe the newspaper. And if you have several or any wards that there doesn't seem to be any significant or any necessity for that meeting, they can be handled on an individual basis.
Yeah, that's a good observation.
Because some, some of the wards are probably going to have a lot of people show up. I think Kate's in one of those type of wards. And I'd, I'd be really surprised if there's more than a handful, if any, in, in the area that so much time has been spent in the past tweaking, and there really hasn't been any. I don't think there's going to be a need for, for anything there, but I could be wrong.
No, it's a very, very good observation, because I think the, the map actually indicated that, I, I don't think there were any changes in the Seventh Ward that we identified, and you were right with the Sixth Ward as well, there are a very limited amount of, of proposed changes.
Alderman Norreco.
Alderman Baker is welcome to come to the Ward Five meeting, which I'm sure will be full and lively and interesting.
There you go.
I'll look at the comments first. If I'm familiar, you know, with any particular situations, I'll.
John, I'd like to thank you and the Neighborhood Service Committee for the comprehensive focus on this issue. I know, as Alderman Baker alludes in those two boards, across the city, there have been a number of inquiries on parking regulations. And rather than dealing with those on a one and two item basis, I appreciate seeing the comprehensive view. I'm sure Chief Lowry, Chief Hicks appreciate the comprehensive view as well, from an enforcement and a public safety standpoint. So thank you for that effort of bringing the focus together. I look forward to those individual ward opportunities for further input.
Mayor, if I could just add to that and attest to that, that this originally began about a year and a half ago, based upon a request by a member, by a resident who's in the audience tonight, looking at their particular neighborhood. And we took, we tried to take a global perspective, and as City Engineer Luskowski pointed out, a multi-department effort. So, the credit goes to all those departments and all the amount of time that has been put into these maps and this analysis. So it's a continuing effort. The next stage of the process is now getting community input to see what makes sense and what's logical moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann Ray. Alderman Mark.
Sorry, one question. Has.
Has, as part of this, has there been any identification of like increased handicap spaces, especially in the downtown third ward area around there where we could increase that? Has that been part of the discussion as far as adding those type of things into it rather than just the regulations at the same time?
You know, this is focused primarily on the regulations. We, we have been receiving more requests for handicap accessible parking in the downtown area, and it has been brought before the Neighborhood Services Committee.
Okay.
So it hasn't been a part of this focus necessarily, but I, I can see in the future where there may be a, a greater need for that parking and, and it's something that the Neighborhood Services Committee is going to consider and see what, what available opportunities there are there.
Okay. Other discussion or questions? No, no. Thank you, John, for the presentation this evening. Is there any public comment registered this evening? Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm speaking to you as a citizen. Before my comments, I just wanted to congratulate John Liskowski. I really appreciate the focus that he has taken with the streets, even though my street probably is in the low numbers and probably needs some work. I'm going to be with Kate Noriko and we're going to be tripping over those potholes until we can get them all worked on. What I wanted to talk to you tonight is about process. And the process is about two ordinances that are up for a second reading tonight. I am aware of your press release, but the reason I want.
Misty, this is the cow.
Yes, the reason I wanted to address the cow is because I don't think that the ordinances came through the proper procedure. Ideally, in my world, it would be, go to committee first, then committee of the whole, then first reading, and then second reading. But I sat here a couple of weeks ago for the first reading. I could be wrong, but I don't believe it went through committee and I don't believe it went through the cow. And so I was, I was wondering why it didn't go through those procedures, because to me, this is the place to ask those questions, just like we did on streets just a moment I also want to know why the council doesn't ask more questions. I appreciate Kate Noriko today asking questions. That's what we need. We need lots of questions on lots of things. Types of questions that you might ask about these ordinances are, the way the words are, the ordinance is written, would this ever result in a lawsuit? Maybe something that would be a civil liberties type of lawsuit because it's restricting freedom of assembly and freedom of speech. So that's a type of question that you could ask.
Misty, again, you're moving to what's on our regular meeting agenda.
Right, I'm, I'm talking about procedure in cow, though. These are questions you could ask in cow. Are they not?
But the example you're citing is an ordinance that isn't part of the cow discussion this evening.
Okay. Well, I will, I have another commitment that I have to be at, so I cannot be here for the full meeting because I am a student at NIU and I have a class. So therefore, I will just finish without asking, without asking everything, saying that I believe it is your duty as elected officials to ask those questions and to make sure that it goes through proper procedure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to remind the mayor that the public comment period does allow for people to have comments, whether they are in the list or not of what the particular meeting is for. Now, I would like to also thank the council for, apparently, somebody must have read the, some of the letters to the editors and some other things. And so thank you very much for at least listening to some of the people in this room. So, I just want you to remember that when you have to back up and start over and go back to the cow on some of these issues, say such as the ordinances you'll be talking about in the next meeting, it does cost money to back up. So it saves more money to do it first right. You know, it's what's that thing, cut twice, measure once, oops. So you're in a cut twice, measure once period now. It's better to measure once, then cut twice, then measure again and make sure you have the right distances. So, good luck on next meeting. I hope everything goes well. I'm going to be in the class too, so thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, are there other comments registered? Did you wish to comment, Elsie?
Yeah, because it's, I didn't think you'd have to register for the public comment portion.
Go ahead.
Again, so real quickly, I will be passing out a sheet of paper with some suggestions for council, just some ideas to share. And, and basically, it, it centers around, I was going to mention this later, but it blends in beautifully with what's been going on right here, right now with the cow meeting. The best rule of thumb is to insist that information be brought forth in a public forum and go through proper procedures. And what I saw here today is a perfect example, phenomenal, phenomenal presentation, probably one of the best I have seen, very informative, and the council was engaged in asking questions, as did our alderman. And also, Alderman Baker pointed out some, some items as well. There were some very good comments about planning as far as how to use the TIF funds and so on and so forth. It's a good indication of how things should be done. I was very, very impressed, and I just wanted to, to comment on, on that and encourage more of this to be going on. And we'd love to have Alderman Baker at our fifth ward meetings because, and we'll be very kind to you. One other suggestion, perhaps some of the wards, as, as Dave pointed out, like Ward Six, Seven, and One, might want to have combined, a combined meeting, you know, as far as the streets. I know that might be an option as well. So, good conversation. This is what cow is all about.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Moved by Alderman Marquardt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carrying. Okay, I've got about thirteen after. Do you need a couple minute break? Let's break and we'll reconvene the regular meeting shortly. January twenty-fifth and ask for a roll call, please.
Jacobson. Finnoukin.
Here.
Marquardt.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. I'll ask Officer Pullos to come forward, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have the agenda before us. I would like to ask, I've been asked to, there's been a request to move E seven, I'm sorry, F seven, out of consent agenda, ordinance two sixteen dash zero zero one. So we'll deal with F seven under items for separate action. As we consider tonight's agenda, I want to frame the item G seven, two thousand sixteen dash zero zero two, adding section fifty-two ninety-two unlawful assemblies, and G eight, two thousand sixteen dash zero zero three, adding section fifty-two dot ninety-three weapons at unlawful assemblies. There has been significant concern raised from persons in the community regarding these two ordinances which are before us tonight in second reading. I am convinced more education is needed and conversations need to be held on these matters. I understand an alderman has interest in recommending referral of these ordinances to the Human Relations Commission for their review. I realize these ordinances are an attempt to frame the context of lawful assemblies within our local setting. We have seen off-campus parties moving into large gatherings that potentially become problematic. Fortunately, we have the advantage of having begun and are continuing local conversations on this topic. Further conversations are needed. The HRC, in due course, can fit this into their discussions. As staff, as the staff memo cites in the backup material, the ordinance, the ordinance fifty-two ninety-two, gives parties interested in conducting a peaceful assembly clear notice of the expectations associated with their behavior in order for them to assemble and exercise their rights. The ordinance is aimed not at generating arrests, but rather providing a low-intensity tool to ensure assemblies are lawfully and safely conducted. As drafted, the ordinance would be constitutional and enforceable. With further conversations, there may be improved language to use for the ordinances. In summary, I think we need to take more time to have conversation across the community on these matters. We are not trying to rush through these ordinances and will take the time to have meaningful conversations with various segments of the community. with various segments of the community achieving better understanding. With that said, I will entertain a motion to table items G seven and G eight, referring them to the Human Relations Commission for further review, bringing the issue back to a future committee of the whole discussion in first and second reading if the ordinances are determined to be in our best interest on these matters. Is there a motion?
Someone?
Um, Mayor, point of order, I, we haven't even approved the agenda tonight. I, I'm not sure that a motion at this point to refer that to committee is appropriate. I don't mind the motion, I just wonder what appropriate time this motion would be acceptable.
I think the-
Alderman, or city attorney.
I think the mayor's intention was to consider this as a component of the approval of the agenda, and this would be removing this item from the agenda in anticipation of approving the balance of the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I add one other point, just for those members in the public? Anybody here that is here tonight in that item, they would be afforded the opportunity to speak under public participation. So if there was something that anybody in the audience wanted to comment, they could still comment on this item, but we, but I believe, Mayor, what you're trying to accomplish is tie this into the overall agenda so the community knows what is happening with the agenda this evening.
Correct, correct. And Dean, a- am I correct that I can entertain a motion at this point to move those items or uh, Alderman Finnucan, I suspect, is prepared just to request removing those items?
Yeah, I, the motion can either be phrased as that or phrased as that with approval of the balance of the agenda as you had stated.
Okay. Um, Alderman Finnucan, city attorney is suggesting your motion read to, to remove items G seven and G eight, referring those to HRC and removing, um, E, E, F, F seven.
Under G.
To separate items.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Alderman Baker.
I could've stayed two more weeks in eighty degrees if I'd known you were gonna do this, seriously. I came back quite upset that it, it made it through first reading. But, uh, I think the whole room here should be afforded a chance to discuss that and maybe we shouldn't wait until the public participation. I think we should hear from them right now before we take the vote. Because maybe we'll get some constructive ideas to change our mind.
Is the outset of our agenda.
But, but you're-
And my intent is to give them a choice to either comment at the time Human Relations Commission meets on these topics and reviews the matter, or to speak this evening under E four.
But if-
Public participation.
But if you remove it and we listen to the public and we come up with an idea on what we could do, then we can't take action yet tonight. So it's not appropriate to remove it right now. We can always change it when we get to that point. Or we could change it after we hear from the public. I'd like to hear, I mean, we have a, a room full of people and they're, they're all calm and they, I'm sure they have a, a, a great deal of wisdom to, to put our way and you made it through the first reading. I think we oughta hear from you before you decide what you're gonna do with this.
My-
Why can't we just wait until we hear from them? And, and if you wanna kick it-
Dave, my sense is that the comments that we've received thus far on the topic, as I've, I've said, convince me that more education is needed, more conversations are needed to be held on the matter. Um, with a full agenda tonight, I don't know that we can do justice to the topic just in public participation tonight.
You guys stack the deck, let's do this. Um, I mean, you did it last week when you put it through first reading. I, I mean, I wanna hear from everybody and I'd like to hear from them before you decide to kick it, 'cause we may have some specific direction when we, if we're gonna, if we're gonna postpone it or put it back.
We have a motion before us to remove G seven and G eight, um, and to move, um, F seven to separate items. Um, that's a motion and has been seconded. Is there further discussion? Not at this point. We're moving through the approval of the agenda.
You're, 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 everybody came here to talk on this subject.
They will have an opportunity.
They will have an opportunity to talk, Alderman Baker.
Mayor, if I, if I could clarify for the-
Yes.
For the council, I, generally in the emails that I was copied on, many of which that went to the council members, some that went to me, many of the conversations I had with members of the community today, the concern was that this process was going too fast. That the first reading happened two weeks ago, prior to the students coming back, uh, from over holiday break, and that we went with first reading two weeks ago, second reading, uh, this evening. At the, the last meeting a couple of weeks ago, several aldermen were not here, so the full council did not have the opportunity to review this. So in light of the comments that have been expressed by, uh, different members of the community, uh, both NIU students and, uh, um, non-NIU students, the thought was to be able to slow this process down. It had been recommended by some members of the community to send this to HRC. I know through an email from Alderman Noriko, it was her intent to make the recommendation. Our goal in consulting with the mayor earlier today is to put everyone's minds at rest, that we are not trying to fast-track this ordinance and give the community the proper opportunity to provide feedback on what this means. What does it mean for assembly at the corner of First and Lincoln versus assembly on NIU campus versus something that's happening, um, up on Greenbrier? So I think there's a lot of different segments or a lot of different perceptions of the background of this ordinance. So our goal was to slow it down, be able to give everyone in that community the opportunity to provide input to the HRC, have everyone provide the opportunity to all of you as council members. So that, I just wanted to provide the background as, that was the intent.
Thank you. Alderman Baker.
Here's my interpretation. I don't mean to be hostile, but you put it through before the students were here, and I represent the students. So I felt that way myself. Number two, if you're gonna slow it down, you're gonna slow it down till summer when they're gone. I want the opportunity to vote it down tonight before we decide what we're going to do if we're gonna send it back. I, the whole idea of trying to interpret the Constitution, uh, puts the hair up on the back of my neck. And I wanna hear from the public before we decide what we're going to do with this. We may learn something tonight where we might send some specific goals to these commissions. Um, whereas right now, it looks like you're, as, as staff or the council, if they kick it right now, it's that we fully intend on passing this, we just, we wanna slow it down. I don't wanna slow it down for that reason. I want the public input that's here tonight, and I'm sure that they wanna have a chance to talk before action is taken on this.
And to respond, just to respond to Alderman Baker's, uh, comment is the intent was not to slow it down and pass the ordinance that is before you tonight. It was to slow it down, to allow the community input, to see if the ordinance in its current format is the one that should go forward or should it be revised based on that community input, to get the comments from all segments of the community to understand the pros and cons of this ordinance. But it's at the pleasure of the council as far as how you wanna proceed with this. We were just reacting from the vast number of emails and calls that we had received that this was generating a lot of discussion, and the biggest concern was that we were going too fast on this ordinance.
Okay, well, I'm reacting the way I am right now because I heard the comment that we may not have enough time to go through this all tonight. Well, everyone's here, we're gonna go through it tonight, whether we take action or not.
I'm planning to entertain those that wish to make comment under public participation tonight. There are members of the HRC in the audience tonight, we'll hear that input. It'll be part of the record. The HRC will have the benefit of that consideration, as will we, when the topic comes back. Alderman Noriko.
I would like to clarify the reasons that I rec, I was going to recommend and in fact to do so, um, that these ordinances go to the Human Relations Commission. Um, on the, uh, these two ordinances, I received the largest volume of emails, phone calls, um, that I've received on any issue since I've been on the council all of six, eight months, but, um, and several people suggested that this matter be reviewed, that it should have been reviewed by the Human Relations Commission. That made sense to me. It was a body that, um, you know, could spend the time and reach out to varied community groups and then come back, you know, to the council. It would also afford us some more time if any of the community members or groups wanted to communicate directly with council and staff. Um, frankly, I'm, you know, I've heard, you know, a whole range of arguments and concerns and, you know, I think we heard, you know, a very good explanation when these ordinances were originally presented, a good explanation from Chief Lowry and, you know, a member of his staff, as the thinking behind them. But clearly, there's a division in terms of thinking about these ordinances. And so my hope is that by allowing some more time for reasoned discussion and reflection and analysis that the groups could come together, that an ordinance that would be reasonable and acceptable to groups that are now apart, that, that kind of ordinance could be crafted when people of goodwill are willing to sit down and speak reasonably and logically with each other. And so I wanted that additional time to be afforded with those specific actions taken.
Alderman Markort.
Ald, Alderman Markort.
Okay, so because I'm not a procedural whiz on what we need to do here. My question is procedural-wise, since we did pass it on the first reading, do we, we need to, since it seems to be most people are against proceeding with it, do we need to leave it on the agenda, vote it down, and then go from there? Or is it something that, because it is on a first reading, does it have to go through that type of a thing and amendments later, or can it be totally re-crafted?
The council has a significant degree of flexibility, uh, even after first reading. It could, you could vote it down if you sought to vote it down. You could direct that it go through some process before it return. Um, I think that the mayor's indication was that, uh, his preference was that it be referred to the Human Relations Commission, that there be an opportunity for a significant additional public comment, and that it then return to a committee of the whole before it come back to council. So I, I think that would be the process that we would intend on following unless the council gave other more specific direction.
Okay.
So there's not a requirement that it continue to be listed on the agenda. There, there's not a requirement that you take definitive action, although you certainly have the ability to do so if you wish to do so.
Okay. Alderman Snow.
I am in favor of slowing down, down the process and giving people the opportunity to have input on, on this. I think the advantage of a local ordinance gives us guidance and direction as to how to handle assemblies. If we don't have any or, uh, local ordinance, what are you left with? State law? I've heard some comments being, well, just leave it up to state law. I don't know if anybody's looked at the state law on mob action, requires two people, only two to be charged with mob action. What's the criteria? Disturbing the peace. How vague is that? I would think something less intrusive than state law would be appropriate for this community. And that's why I think the discussion needs to continue and we need to improve these processes and figure it out. Because if we don't have a local ordinance, you're left with state law. State law, if you're charged with mob action, jail time, thirty days to three years, depending on what, what, what you're charged with. I would think so, something a little less intensive than that would be what we would want. But if that's what you wanna be left with, with state law, yeah, then, then we don't have a local ordinance.
So Alderman Snow, are you speaking in favor of the motion?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, and some people may wanna bring it up and vote it down entirely. I don't wanna vote it down entirely. I wanna improve it. I, I wanna make it a better ordinance, uh, so that we're not left with the state law, which I think is extremely onerous and vague.
Okay. We have before us, Alderman Baker.
I, I'm trying to let everybody come up and talk before you take action, before you take action. Are you gonna let them come up right, if you go ahead and vote this and we agree to, to send it back and, and, and slow it down through committee and through the, the Human Relations Committee and then the COW?
Be called on as public participation to comment as they choose.
When, in twenty minutes or immediately?
Three minutes.
No. Are you, are you gonna start that participation, uh?
No, we'll go through the agenda as we have it before us, Dave. Okay, we have a motion before us to approve the agenda as amended. Um, ask for a roll call.
Finnucan?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Favor?
No.
Ray?
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion carried. Okay, moving to special items, um, the item before us is proudly decalb. Um, I've seen several representatives here.
Point of order. I, why, why did the mayor vote on that?
There were four positive votes. Right, majority. There were four positive. Um, we have representatives from proudly decalb here. America's Best Community Update. Um, I understand Cohen Barnes, Brett Brown, will be presenting.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate your time tonight. Uh, you know, one thing I love about this community is there's things that come up that may divide us, but we all come together to express our opinions. And then there's things about this community that unite us, and we all come together to try and make it a better place. And that's ultimately what we're here to talk about tonight. So it's gonna be a tag team. I'm Cohen Barnes.
And I'm Brett Brown. Nice to see you guys, uh, this evening. Uh, we do wanna talk about the America's Best Communities competition and our community's progress in that competition. Uh, I am, uh, Cohen and I have been working on this with a, a whole lot of other people since last spring. I'm not getting to the mic, is that it?
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Uh, a lot, I, we have a number of people in the audience. Uh, I might do a Tom Cushman imitation for you here tonight, uh, at some point, uh, so you don't have to. Uh, we wanted to recognize that they are here, uh, talk to you a little bit, if we can get this thing moving. Um, can we click that?
Yes, right there.
How do we do that? Uh, this slide's telling you that, um, Cohen's gonna go over the, uh, opportunity that this represents for our community. Sorry, I see the, I see the eye. Uh, it's not a two-person, uh, podium, I don't think. Uh, and we're gonna talk about, uh, give you an overview of the plan. I'm gonna talk about why this plan, why we think we can do it, and then how other people can get involved at the end.
All right, so what is the America's Best Community Grant? Ultimately, it's a competition that Frontier Communications, the Weather Channel, Dish Network, and Cobank put on, where the competition revolves around communities that can come up with a revitalization plan, a way that they can move their community forward. There's money involved. This is a contest, and the grand prize is three million dollars. Started off, over three hundred communities participated in this contest, got down to fifty, and decalb made it to that fifty. At that time, we were awarded fifty thousand dollars in order to move, uh, our progress, uh, forward in the competition. We spent six to eight months, uh, since going into the top fifty, to work on a revitalization plan that we submitted in November. And we waited until just a couple of weeks ago and found out we're in the top fifteen. And what that means is, in two months, we're gonna go down to North Carolina, and we're gonna present in front of like a Shark Tank kind of environment to, uh, a bunch of judges, and they're gonna pick at that time eight communities that move forward in the competition. Those eight communities are awarded one hundred thousand dollars towards the revitalization plan, and then you're in the spot of one in eight chance of winning three million dollars. Second place is two million, and third place is one million dollars. So we got a really great shot to bring private money to this community in order to move efforts forward. To me, how cool is that with everything that's going on right now in the state of Illinois? We have a vision. I encourage everyone, go onto proudlydecalb.com. You can find out the full plan. There's a cool executive summary too, a shortened version, uh, for you. But you'll find our vision there, and the vision is ultimately what is guiding us through this process. So I highly encourage everyone to go to proudlydecalb.com, download the plan and, and read the vision there. So ultimately, how are we gonna make this happen? The root of the plan is we have to have seven projects, uh, that we have put forth, and I'm gonna go through them real quick. One is an ACE corridor. Ultimately, if you can imagine, uh, a designated area within the community that sidewalks can't be gray. You know, light posts can't be black or gray. Uh, utility boxes have to have murals on them. These are ideas that we could accomplish here, where with northern and local artists, we could have sculptures, we could have murals, we could have sidewalk art, we could have a lot of beautiful things that would be wonderful as a resident of this community to be able to participate in, but then to be able to attract people from the outside from tourism perspective, to be able to come to this community and see, uh, one of the great things within our community. We're also gonna do a business incubator. Our goal is, we've got a lot of bright, bright people coming out of Northern Illinois University that we wanna- that we want to give them the opportunity, if they see a need and want to fill a need, that's the core of entrepreneurialism, that we've got a business incubator in place to be able to help them realize their dreams, start their business, and grow employment, grow the economy of Decalb. We also look at a co-work space. Ultimately, that's a space, once you've gotten past the business incubator portion and you actually need a physical location, we'll have a place for you to start your first, your first business. We'll have an office for you. As well as, in our community, we have people that work remotely for Caterpillar, for Microsoft. This will give them the opportunity to not have to have kids at home and the dog barking and things like that. They can actually come to a professional office space, be around like-minded individuals, and be excited about being in business and be around people that are similar to them. Food hub, I mean, we're agriculture here, right? So what better way than, what if we got all the farmers locally to be able to bring their produce to a central location, package that, and be able to distribute to crop Costco? Trader Joe's on a larger scale. A food hub allows something like that to happen. Or how cool would it be if Rosita's wants to mass produce and go national with their salsa? Having a commercial kitchen that people could take advantage of to be able to get their idea, much like the business incubator component, get their idea to market, but they don't have the facilities or the capital to be able to do it themselves. So a food hub really allows us to tie back to our roots of agriculture, as well as our spirit of opportunity, which makes up Decalb. Then there's also the steam center, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Wouldn't that be fantastic? If we could have something like that around downtown Decalb or downtown Decalb, where we could have our students, our children, those of us that are raising a family here, to have that kind of a facility that we could run people through and see all the wonderful things that are transpiring with technology, as well as, again, from a tourism perspective, bringing people from the outside to come to our community and see what a great asset our community has. Branding and marketing, there's a lot of voices in Decalb and a lot of opinions about Decalb. There's one component is, there's a lot of us that just really love this place. And Proudly Decalb has given us a voice. To be able to express a lot of the cool things that are happening, whether it's on campus or whether it's in the community, Proudly Decalb is giving us the ability to post pictures and stories. And if you go online, at this point, thousands of people are following us on social media, whether it's Twitter, whether it's Instagram, or whether it's Facebook. We're building a community and a voice that is ultimately just talking about how great of a place it is to live, work here. And then the last one of the seven is the Decalb Leadership Institute. We have a lot of great leadership programs within our community, and we were talking to all of them, and we're looking at how can we expand or get a little more strategic in what we're doing. One of the components could be youth leadership. How do we develop our youth, the greatest asset that we have in our community, to become the future leaders of our community? But then also, giving people the skill set that want to run for office, that want to be on a nonprofit board, or an organization that has individuals that they know could excel with some more training. Creating a leadership academy that they can go through for those kind of skill sets only strengthens the organizations within our community or strengthens our elected officials.
Okay. There's a lot going on in that slide, and I think, I hope I figured the microphone out by now. We've been zooming right along here in the interest of time. I wanted to take a minute with this one, though. The top of that is, can we do it? And it says yes, of course, and that's where I thought on a lighter night I might do my Tom Cushman there, who would say something like, heck yeah, we can do it. Thought I'd anticipate you on that. But maybe for tonight, maybe it's as important to go over the first bullet point as much as any. One of the big reasons that we think we can do it is because the community is overwhelmingly behind, the principles behind the plan. And the two points that you see up there, people are hungry for a sense of place and community pride. They want to have that sense of identity. And we've talked to the people, and they're saying, it's the jobs, we need economic development, but we want you to take advantage of all the investment that we've already made, of the assets that we have here in place. And it is appropriate at the moment, I think, to thank the city for allowing us, with this grant opportunity, to piggyback on the strategic planning process that they had last summer. We found out in a relatively short period of time that we had the opportunity to put together a revitalization plan, and that it was critically important that it had community engagement, that we had to have a way to reach out and get thoughtful input from all sectors of our community. And because the city had its strategic planning process going and had already arranged for community conversations all over town, in all of the wards, and with outreach to minority populations, we were able to talk and get input from somewhere between 300 and 400 people. And it's from that, and their input, that we know that a sense of pride and place and that our economic development efforts are supported overwhelmingly by the community. The last two bullets there, the Proudly Decalb initiative, it has got ahead of steam. We are so excited about that. It's about the things that are positive here. It's about remembering what we have and what we've done together. And the last bullet then, and I'd like to flip the slide if we can, refers to the fact that we've got a lot of investment in place. You can see on the slide, the hospital, high school, the police station, the library. Better than that, we do have a video, it's about two minutes long, for the benefit of the people that get this on television and might not have seen it, we would like to play that for you now. Is that, is that okay? Yep. With everyone? Yeah. Let's do that.
All you, Jeff.
In Decalb, we take pride in our heritage of agricultural innovation that shaped technology, progress, culture, and life in modern America. We've led the way from barbed wire to fully wired. A city of development and culture with global reach, Decalb is a city on the move, with a foundation of investment in education, healthcare, infrastructure, commerce, and arts and entertainment. We've created a community of growth for families, students, careers, and businesses. This kind of progress has produced a new form of modern community. We'll have a new city business model with a new city brand and a community-wide leadership development. We're expanding to low-carbon industries such as higher education with a smart space learning center. We're growing our community lifestyle with a downtown arts, culture, and entertainment district, and a new food hub. And we're working toward high-tech incubator and co-working spaces that serve to accelerate small business development. Decalb is on target to attract new, long-term residents and businesses. We're proud to be one of America's best communities. Decalb is our city, and this is our vision. We are Proudly Decalb.
All right. Thanks for letting us take the time to show that. On a night when we do have some things to struggle with, it's good to remember how much we've done that's positive and how much momentum that we do have here. Why this plan? Why these projects? For the points listed there, the seven proposed projects, and I go to the third one, we thought they were the best balance of using the assets that we have and that they were also achievable within the 11-month period that we have to work on for the grant. If we advance to the next round, and we're feeling fairly confident that we will, we'll be one of eight communities working from May of this year through March of 2017 to show that we are deserving of an opportunity of $1 million, $2 million, or $3 million. And I, when you looked at the projects we chose, we thought that those gave us the best chance to win. Reminder, they're not the only seven projects that we need. They're not necessarily the seven most important ones, but we think they are a great start. And on my vote, Proudly Decalb might actually be one of the most important ones. And Cohen's going to have a few words about that.
So Proudly Decalb, like I mentioned, thousands of people following us online. It's crazy the pace that it's picking up and the comments, the pictures that come in. Lots of NIU students posting pictures at games, when they're in the spans, in the stands themselves. Even this Friday at the First National Bank Challenge, the Decalb teams, both the girls' and the boys' teams, are going to have Proudly Decalb gear on when they do their warm-ups. I mean, how cool is that? I mean, we're seeing this more and more and more organizations that are just running with the thing, which is absolutely fantastic. By the way, I have bumper stickers and all kinds of stuff here. If anyone wants them before you leave, I'll be, I'll be waiting outside. But really, the, the brand itself, the movement, let's call it Proudly Decalb, it's just about positive attitude, right? It's about having an opportunity to celebrate. When we do something good, let's high-five and celebrate the fact that we just crushed something. It's fantastic. It's being proud about your community. I love this place. I mean, I went through elementary school to graduating Northern Illinois University in this town. I love it. And I want to be able to say that, and I want to be able to communicate that to others. And most importantly, I want to be around other people that feel the exact same way, that want to move this place forward, not talk about the past. It's about building something better and a shared vision. But Proudly Decalb is also more than that.
Yeah, it's, it's more than the power of positive thinking. It's more than the strength that you get from working together. In the slide there, you see the word determinism. It's about the sense that you can make a difference, and that if you work together and if you have a will, you will. And I think that that probably resonates in the room here tonight. Take action and stay the course, and you'll, you'll get there.
All right, here we are. We're at the end. So the question is, how can you help? First thing, remember, this is a contest. $3 million, private money invested in our community is on the line right now. First thing you can do, go to proudlydecalb.com. Just check it out. See the stories, see the pictures, just get excited about the community. But our plan is up there as well, and I encourage everyone to read through it because the detail on the seven projects is phenomenal. Also, there's an executive summary, like I mentioned, if you just wanted to go through it really quick. Follow us on Twitter, follow us on Facebook, follow us on Instagram. See those things that are happening and get excited about what's going on in the community. But the most important thing that we want everyone to do, look at those seven projects, find out what resonates for you as an individual, or for you as an organization or a company, and say, hey, plug me in, and we will plug you in. You have all the contact information of every, we call it the project CEOs, of everyone who's running the particular projects at this time. Give them an email, let them know you're interested, and wow, let's, let's do this thing together. Because ultimately, $3 million, let's win this thing. So that's it, everyone. Proudly Decalb, I got stickers, shirts, at sports of all sorts. Just keep it going, okay? And thanks for the time tonight, and I really appreciate it.
Brett and Cohen, thank you for the report this evening. Thank you for, to the entire ABC team for bringing together a positive voice of community leadership. Your time and dedication in bringing such positive influence to the table is noteworthy and appreciated. Too often, people do not take the time to look at our community for what we have accomplished. Your work does make a difference. We owe the team a debt of gratitude. Thank you to each and every team member and to those project teams that are yet to evolve. So thank everyone. Okay, moving on, we have Lights of Distinction Awards. This program is recognizing celebratory displays that individuals choose to put at their individual residence. The first I have this evening is Robert and Pat Carlson. Are they in the audience this evening? Robert and Pat Carlson are presented a Lights of Distinction Award in gratitude for their participation in promoting community pride. I also have a Lights of Distinction Award for Dr. Suzanne Cook. Is Suzanne in the audience? Okay. Suzanne, I'm, I apologize. Robert and Pat Carlson are at 3 Wedgewood Cove. Suzanne Cook is at 444 Greenwood Acres North. And a third Lights of Distinction is presented to Robert and Donna Portsheller, 3028 Wedgewood Drive. So these three families have chosen to decorate their homes during the holiday season and promote community pride with that decoration. We will pass those certificates on to the individuals. And thank you for that contribution to our community. We do have next FY 2016 second quarter financial report. I'll call on Financial Director Kathy Haley for that presentation.
At the end of December 2015, the city reached the mid-year point for their budget year ending June 30th, 2016. The report included in your agenda packet is meant to give you an overview of where we're, where we're falling out, actual expenditures versus our budgeted parameters. The first chart that you see is revenues and expenditures, actual year-to-date compared to the budget. It's across all funds, with the exception of the police pension fund, fire pension fund, and the library. But you can see that percent trending for six months should be about 50% in general fund, in operating funds, such as the general fund and the water fund, with capital funds expenditures being more project-specific. The general fund right now is showing that it's falling at about 54.19% of revenues compared to the budgeted parameter, and 49.76% of expenditures compared to budgeted parameters. So overall, if we start with general fund revenues, revenues in the general fund really are trending right at about budgeted parameters. If you recall, property tax revenue is at 99% collected by the end of December, so it tends to pull that percentage up slightly. Our three largest sources of revenue for the general fund are property taxes, sales taxes, both municipal and home rule, and then income taxes. So to start out with property taxes, as I mentioned, I trended out the last four years of property taxes. We are a home rule community. We levy for dollars, and we typically get the dollars we levy for. So we've been trending at about 98% collection rate over the last four years, with above 99% year-to-date for FY 2016, which is great. Again, property taxes, this dollar amount is the tax levy 2014 amount, collected in calendar year 2015, recorded in fiscal year 2016. To go on to sales tax revenue, which is our largest source of revenue in the general fund at over 44%, in the state of Illinois, the sales tax base is 6.25% on general merchandise. 5% goes to the state, 1% goes to the local municipality where the sale occurred, and 0.25% is the county. Our municipal portion, that 1%, has been very stable over the last four years, and you can see that by the trend, the chart as well, at about between 5.3 million and 5.4 million. However, the city also imposes a 1.75% home rule sales tax, and that, while it's trending fairly constant at 6.7 million, is showing a slight dip this year in the last couple of months. So we trended out a possible dip of about $450,000 under budgeted projections, or 6.9%. Staff will, however, continue to monitor this revenue source monthly to see where this trend is headed. The difference between those two percentages, because you're wondering why the trend is different, is home rule sales tax does not apply to tangible personal property that is titled or registered with an agency of the state's government, like trucks, boats, motorcycles, cars. And it also doesn't apply to food or human consumption that is to be consumed off-premises where it is sold, other than alcoholic beverages, soft drinks, and food which has been prepared for immediate consumption, so like grocery stores. As well as prescription and non-prescription medicines, drugs, medical appliances, insulin, urine testing materials, syringes, needles used by diabetics. That's all wording from the Department of Revenue, so. So you can see the last four years of trends for both the municipal sales taxes on here and the home rule sales tax. The third-largest revenue source is income tax. This revenue source continues to increase and is projected to outpace budgeted parameters by more than $580,000. Note, this revenue source is part of the local government distributive fund, or better known as LGDF, which is collected and dispersed by the state of Illinois based on a per-capita basis. We use the projections for this revenue source from the Illinois Municipal League, and Illinois Municipal League's most recent projection is stating that in spite of the state's fiscal constraints, during the current municipal fiscal year, LGDF payments to local governments have been made within 60 days of being vouchedered. Through November, LGDF voucher for dispersment grew by 14.2% compared to the same period last year. This amount can be attributed to both legislative and economic reasons. Legislative reasons is the timing changes around the January 1st, 2015 decrease in the income tax rate and the associated increase in LGDF allocation rates that gave municipalities a one-time bump in May and June. The economic... The economic reason is that final tax payments allocated in May and June were greater than anticipated due to higher capital gains in tax year 2014. Some portion of this higher-than-anticipated revenue should be considered one-time rather than ongoing, and should not be built into the underlying trend, which is not built into the Illinois Municipal League projections. However, these factors combined with the improving labor market have boosted year-to-date total LGDF allocations. So while home rule sales tax dollars appear to be trending down slightly, other revenue sources, such as income tax and local use tax, which is the tax we receive for internet sales, tax are trending in strong and above initial projections put out by the Illinois Municipal League. So, overall, we feel total revenues in the General Fund will be trending right at budgeted dollars. General Fund expenditures, at the end of the second quarter, General Fund expenditures are showing to be at about 49.76% of budget. Overall, the General Fund is operating within or below budgeted parameters. You can see by your chart below, we've broken that up by department. While it appears police and fire are trending ahead of budgeted parameters, this can be attributed to all the employer contributions collected and remitted within the first quarter of the city's fiscal year, which are property tax dollars. So for the Fire Department, that's 2.178 million, and for the Police Department, that's 1.637 million. The Finance Department also appears to be trending above budgeted dollars, however, IT is within the Finance Department, and most of our service contracts are paid in full at the beginning of the fiscal year. Overall, finance should fall within budgeted parameters at the end of FY 16. Other departments, you can see, are trending behind budgeted parameters due to holding off on all new items for the first three months. In particular, the Human Resources is trending well below budget due to holding off on the hiring of the budgeted Human Resource Director position. Again, the total breakout by type of category expenditure. So Personnel Services does appear that it's trending slightly ahead at 53.38%, but this is where our property tax or employer contributions are shown. If we calculated out those contributions at a six-month figure, expenditures for this category would be showing percent used at 46.29%. Other charges also appears to be trending slightly ahead. This category includes sales tax rebate payouts, as well as our contracted service contract agreements, and those again are paid within the first half of the fiscal year. The final chart is a fund balance chart. Again, it's on, across all funds. In particular, we now have true FY 15 actuals, and the General Fund has fallen out at 23.44% of expenditures, which is well, you know, reaching our goal of 25%. It's $8 million, $18,755,000, which is the highest it's been in the last 10 years. At the six-month mark, revenues are outpacing expenditures by over $1.7 million. Staff does not anticipate that final year in revenues will surpass expenditures by that amount. However, we are projecting revenues to fall right within budget and expenditures to come slightly below budget. So if that trend does continue the remainder of the year, the city could potentially hit its 25% fund balance reserve target. If we just came in right at revenue and expenditure budgeted dollars, we would fall at 24.17% of expenditures, which is also a great story, so. And I would take any questions.
Okay. Questions for Kathy? Hearing none. I'd like to thank you, Kathy, for a very positive report. I'd like to thank department heads and city staff for working in cooperation with finance to bring in these results through six-month city operations. So thank you for that very positive report. Moving next to public participation. David, I don't think it was too long getting to this. Herb Rubin?
Mayor, if I can.
Yes.
I was speaking with one of the Human Relations Commission members before the meeting tonight, and it may be the case that because of the significant public interest in this, they may want to hold special meetings or have them at an alternate forum that would be convenient for the public. We certainly will post any of that on the website, but I'm going to put a pad of paper at the back on the table as you come in the council chambers. If anyone wants to put down their email address, we will also certainly make a list and send out notices of any meetings, anyone that wants to be so notified.
Okay. And I appreciate the city attorney providing a mechanism. You're welcome to comment on the ordinances that have been withdrawn from tonight's agenda at this time, or you're welcome to register interest in speaking at the HRC meeting as well. Alderman Baker?
I wanted to clarify my comment about coming back two weeks from warm weather. What I wanted to emphasize is, I wanted to make sure that everyone here didn't come to this meeting and then not have meaningful input opportunity. And I want to thank everyone for sticking around. This is one of the first times in the 15 years I've been here where something like this has happened, where people didn't just head for the door and mumble on the way out that there are disappointments. So thank you for sticking around.
Thank you, Alderman. Herb Rubin? And I'd ask speakers to please respect a three-minute timeframe. I'll time that three minutes in general. I will give you a heads-up as you approach that timeframe.
Okay. Herb Rubin, Fifth Ward, I will be very brief. I assume that others will talk on the substance of the ordinances, and we'll have a chance to do so at the Human Relations meeting, so I won't express my many personal concerns with it right now. Second point is, I've talked to the chief, and he's very sincere about trying to solve some problems. And these problems need solutions, but I don't think the approach taken was correct because it should be obvious from what was being proposed that the issues would bring up serious concerns about civil liberties, about speech rights, and other things that are bound to lead to comments. So my major question is, why, when it is so obvious that these proposed ordinances would bring up real concerns among citizens about speech rights, why did it take massive letter-writing, attendance of large numbers of people, call the attention to the staff and to the council, that this stuff should have been discussed long before ordinances were written? Now, I'd like to thank you for scheduling such a meeting, but this time, can we go and do problem, discussion, solution, rather than solution, problem, and then only maybe discussion? Thank you.
Thank you. Howard Solomon?
I'm Howard Solomon of the Third Ward. First of all, I'd like to commiserate with all of you aldermen for having to put up with the agendas that are published on the city website. These documents comprise a moving target. For instance, when I looked at the contents of the agendas that appeared on Friday night, there were a different number of pages, and there were no obvious lines through showing as there are by Saturday morning. By the time I looked again on Saturday night, the ordinance had changed both its location and its content. You must be wizards to be able to give it fair consideration under conditions of trying to read a 406-page agenda that changes two days before a board meeting. I know that if I were asked to do what you are asked to do, that I would find the task nearly impossible. It is almost as if someone is using the length of the agenda to deliberately obfuscate the documents where greatest clarity is required. Your patience in putting up with those who play hide the document is commendable, even if an end to this method of publishing agendas but not publishing minutes is more desired by you and your constituents. Section 52.92 places great responsibilities into the hands of peace officers. I'm not sure what these are, but I've seen people in DeKalb called police officers. I have to guess that since these are likely the persons that confront demonstrators or protesters, that what I and the cars that call themselves police are being used for are this job as a so-called peace officer. And since that's what the ordinances they are, then their mission must be to bring about peace. And that certainly sounds like a good idea, but I'm apparently very limited in my understanding of how we do things here. And so I don't get the wrong idea. I went and decided that I would look up what peace was based on 1964 Nobel Peace Prize winner Martin Luther King, who said that peace is not the absence of tension, but the presence of justice. The problem that I see with ordinance 2016 002 is that the best it can accomplish is reduction of tension. And it does, as it does this, it leaves intact the underlying injustice that protesters address. The result is that the injustice is thereby legitimized by the city. The protesters may be dispersed on one occasion, but the social or moral ill to which they point is simply left alone to do the harm that it inevitably does. Meanwhile, because the signs are hidden and the voice is unheard, the city declares itself the defender of those who have perpetrated the injustice in the first place. If there is harm being done to persons or property, it's a police officer's function to stop it. But this ordinance goes too far and places too much authority with the first officer to arrive at the scene of what will ultimately be called unlawful. That person instantly legislates and judges the lawfulness of the group. That person is neither a legislator nor a judge, and is not by virtue of being a part of the police force entitled to make a unilateral declaration of the lawfulness of the assembled group. The placement of this authority, this placement of authority, in an age where video surveillance is available, for those of you looking for new ideas, is, in my opinion, both unnecessary and unwise. Thank you.
Now, Simul Muhammad?
Hi, I'm a real beef, I'm sorry. My name is Asim Muhammad. I'm a student at Northern Illinois University. I'm a biology major, chemistry minor, member of a mega sci-fi fraternity incorporated, and my comments are regarding the ordinance regarding the right to assemble. I just hope that you allow the students of NIU who make up the majority of this town's population to be a part of the decision-making process. To have the first reading of ordinance that deals with assembling without the vast majority of the people who actually assemble being in town since the students were on winter break two weeks ago feels like a bit of a sneak attack. So please, Mayor, give us a chance to address anything that could possibly challenge our first amendment rights, who our forefathers of this great nation fought so hard to provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Capitan?
Steve Capitan, former Third Ward Alderman, and I'll share my procedural comments with you later. How appropriate it is that we had a presentation from the Proudly DeKalb Group. Tonight is an exercise in democracy and how it should work. I'm proud of DeKalb when we, as a community, do the right thing. And I would like to thank the council for doing the right thing right now by postponing this, although procedurally, I wish that you would have just moved it up to on the agenda, discussed it so that we could hear from you all and from the staff about this Alderman Nureko mentioned that Chief Lowry gave an explanation of the need for this ordinance. A large number of citizens of our community took the time and the trouble to be here tonight. Their act of citizenship makes me proud of DeKalb. Our efforts should be respected by hearing from Chief Lowry tonight as to the need for this ordinance, and from the council members as to the need for this ordinance. Y'all voted for it. Finally, on item 21 that was added since the last vote, since the first vote, seems to me the kitchen sink clause, and this is defining an unlawful assembly. And it states, engaging in conduct which constitutes the commission of a misdemeanor or felony under the Illinois Criminal Code of 2012 or other Illinois statute. Does that include jaywalking? If one individual out of a group of 300 people that have assembled to express and exercise their First Amendment rights does something, including a provocateur who doesn't agree with the crowd, they can precipitate the police decision to order that crowd to give up their First Amendment rights. There's something wrong with that picture.
Thank you. David Raking?
Try to be short. I don't think we need the ordinance. I'm not sure why it appeared. I was kind of surprised, other than if you were trying to drum up an audience for the council meeting tonight. I want to share an experience I had here in this town. I've lived here for 20 years. When the Iraq War broke out, my wife, who teaches at the university, had our two-year-old son, and I came from work, and the demonstration was going to be down at the corner of First and Lincoln Highway down there at the plaza. As my wife marched with students and other faculty people from the university, they were confronted by DeKalb police officers who use riot batons to block their way to walk down the street to where the demonstration was taking place. And my wife basically confronted the officer and said, you're going to club my kid. He then embarrassed, stepped aside, and allowed the march to proceed. At the march, I observed the greatest assembly of video equipment I'd ever seen up on the roof of Otto's, as well as armed officers, expecting as some kind of riot was going to break out for citizens in our community who were peacefully assembling in a hyper-patriotic atmosphere to protest what everyone ultimately came to understand was a foolish and tragic war. Now, that's the only problem I've ever seen with demonstrations in this town. I think we need more demonstrations in DeKalb, not less. And I think we ought to have an atmosphere that encourages that. Our greatest strength in this community, a university town, should be the encouragement of free speech, diversity. That's our greatest strength. You want to talk about what makes DeKalb, it's the university makes DeKalb. All our jobs went away, by the way. All our jobs went away. I remember this town in the 70s when the whole section of town, the east side, was manufacturing. We had thousands of manufacturing jobs in this town. They're all gone, right? I wish we'd been protesting when that was happening. But the fact of the matter is, going here forward, I think is unnecessary, and I'm kind of ashamed that this, in my community, this ordinance was even considered.
Thank you, David. Lynn Fazekas?
My sentiments exactly.
Lynn Fazekas?
I'm really hoping that City Council will maybe take a lesson from the PR disaster that's been created here. And I think that, for example, when you talk about people of goodwill sitting down and talking about issues, that maybe a little bit more attention to procedure to show that goodwill might be more apparent. So if, in fact, these ordinances had started out by talking about solving a problem at the committee of the whole, then that would have helped. Referral before, basically doing it in self-defense, referral to HRC, which I know a lot of boards and commissions, as an aside, are not, do not have enough members for a quorum now. I know the Economic Development Committee meets about once a year. They're supposed to meet every other month. I hope the Human Relations Commission is not in the same boat. I don't know. I hope not. But, you know, this could have been prevented by having a procedure whereby the City Council takes its responsibility for actually giving There is no reason that ordinances of this sort should have been originated, initiated by a paid contractor. That doesn't make sense. It came out of nowhere. The timing, let's face it, is very suspect. If you had had two meetings in December, this would have passed already, and that would have been inexcusable. I don't know if that's the reality of it, but it sure looks bad. And like I said, I'm just, I'm hoping that we can avoid this, the same kind of thing in the future. I hope you take, take it to heart and make sure that the dialogue is there before you pass things like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Alex Neyron.
No. The others are under separate items. Alex Neyron.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Alex Neyron. I'm the executive director at the Historic Egyptian Theater here in DeKalb. And I'm here tonight and excited to share with you a new project that has been underway with community members and students from NIU. The Egyptian Theater has continually been looking for new and expanded funding opportunities. Specifically, when looking for and applying for grants, it can be very time-intensive, especially with our small amount of staff. Bessie Chronopoulos, a proud supporter of the theater and local community member, has volunteered her time to lead a small group of volunteers researching potential grants for the theater operations and capital projects. Bessie is here tonight, along with some of the other volunteers who have been working on this project, and will speak to you here in just a moment about that. This has been a great opportunity for the theater to gain valuable research on potential new grants, and also provides a great learning opportunity for NIU students that have been involved. It has also provided another way for the community to get involved with the Egyptian Theater and showcase some of the great benefits that our DeKalb Public Library provides, especially for the nonprofit community when conducting such research. So following me next will be Bessie, who will give you a quick overview of some of the efforts that they've conducted over the last couple of months. And I just want to publicly thank them, the students, and the DeKalb Library for all of their efforts with that. Thank you.
I'm going to make this very quick because there's some other folks here who can say this, what has to be said a lot better than I can. It never ceases to amaze me that the more one learns, the more one realizes how little they know. I started, I love the Egyptian Theater, like many, many people here in, in the community do. And I went to the library where the folks there are absolutely unbelievably helpful. And I've given you, I think I emailed you a, a little graphic, and I've given it to the mayor, if he could just pass it down. It's just my very amateurish attempt at graphics. It's the best I can do. And the folks there were extremely helpful. And what I wanted to do was go into a database, and they have the foundation directory online, and you can go on there and start looking for grants. Talk about a totally different world. It just opens up a whole world. There are hundreds, literally hundreds and hundreds of grants for just about everything that you could possibly want. So I started looking, and long story short, the faculty, the very talented faculty at NIU, Dr. Alicia Shattoman and Dr. Nancy Castle, were very helpful in that their students, actually four of them, were, were put together with the little bit of research that I had done, along with Alex's help and tremendous help from Teresa Iverson and Sally Defoy at the library. And they started researching grants, and they have come up with four of them, which we're going to be taking to the next step. And that is to apply for them. And hopefully, the hope is that, as your little graphic here says, citizens plus students plus faculty plus library plus PET, working together, and this is a grassroots effort, folks, can accomplish a task to help with our theater and other things as well. So Nancy, Dr. Nancy. She, she's really good. These two ladies are unbelievable as far as what they know and what they can offer and what some of the students can offer. It was a great experience for them as a class project, and hopefully, we can continue that with other students in the future. So. See?
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, Dr. Nancy.
I didn't know she was going to do this. I'm glad I wore my good pants and not the jeans I was planning to for tonight. I am the retired director of the Center for NGO Leadership. We have the Community Leadership and Civic Engagement, major, minor, and academic programs. And those are the students that, that Bessie is talking about. Alicia Shattoman is one of our faculty members. The new interim director is a woman named Anne Hanley, who couldn't be here tonight. But our, our program is a program that works with the community and with the university.
For benefit of our city clerk, identify yourself, please. I don't have your registration.
I'm Nancy Castle, and I don't live in DeKalb.
Thank you.
Sorry. I used to, though, for many years. Proud DeKalb. Anyway, our students are, some of them are actually here in the audience, but probably not the ones that were involved with that. We are a major that really looks at bringing the community and the university together, sort of happenstance. Jennifer Gross has been a big part of the, the work that we do. I do not want people to walk out of here thinking, however, that this is a major, these are students who all go out and know how to find grants and can write them. But in a couple of years, they will be. So, so I hope that's what you wanted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mac McIntyre.
No comment. We're moving to that next. Now it's a time to make comment on the consent agenda.
My name is Mac McIntyre, and I live in DeKalb. I'm hoping that the item F8 is taken off of consent agenda and given some consideration. I'm trying to get some people in the building and development industry to do some new construction in DeKalb. We've got a lot of lots available. And I was just told that 26 of the last 28 homes, new construction homes built in Sycamore, were people from DeKalb. And I don't know how many building permits we've issued, but I know it's not a very high number. It's a couple. And, and we really need, that's a, that's a sales leak, leakage that is very costly when you consider the property tax value of a new home construction. We also have the same type of problem in commercial construction. And so I'm wondering, are these new fees, have they been discussed with people in the building and development community so that they are aware and can do proper budgeting as you do? Because when you start talking about plan review fees, that's an expensive item. And if you're increasing those fees, then the business community would appreciate hearing about it and maybe kicking the tires a little bit so that, so that they're better prepared and they can also provide input on, on fee structures. And it was mentioned earlier on the subject most folks are here about, that, that the council isn't in a rush to, to do things. Well, when we see something on the agenda for second reading, then that means there's a good chance that it's either going to be passed or, or not, but there's a good chance it's going to be voted for final approval. So this is a second reading item, and it's on consent agenda, and I think that's improper. And, and I think we're getting too quick to second reading lately on a lot of issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. That's the group I have registered to speak on E4 and G7 and 8.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Bessie Chronopoulos was listed for further comment.
We will come back to separate items as they fit. Bessie's registered to speak on G1 and G4. I'm planning to come back to those. Moving to consent agenda, the consent, consent agenda before you this evening consists of the following items: approval of city council minutes, the executive minutes and authorization for parcel, partial release, the partial release of minutes of the regular meeting executive session of January.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we have people who are requesting to speak under E4.
Do we have them registered?
We don't have sheets for them, but I believe there are people who are motioning that they'd like to speak on that issue.
I would ask, there are speaker request forms out on the table. If you could fill those out, turn those into the city clerk, and we'll come to those. City attorney.
In the alternative, Mayor, if you wanted to, it sounds like there were a number of people that wanted to speak perhaps to G7 and G8 that hadn't understood the city's normal process for registering for public comment.
At this point, let me open the floor. Are those wishing to speak on G7 and G8? Come to the podium, please identify yourself. And we ask a three-minute speaking period, so if you could please respect that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Timmy Adaboje. I'm a senior at NIU and also serve currently as the president of the Black Student Union. I'd just like to say that the ordinances that were being proposed, students were never consulted on. This is something that we found out about, about the majority of us here, literally within the past couple of hours. So the idea that an ordinance that would go to alter constitutional rights that we have as students, without even being consulted, is, comes off as very sneaky, comes off as very inauthentic. And that's something that we definitely will not stand for as students. We definitely want to have the opportunity to have our voices heard. So I'm glad that there was an opportunity here to make an amendment so that we can make our feelings heard about this. This is something that we feel very strongly about, which is why we came out in such strong attendance. If you take a look around, this is a majority of students here, and I'm sure that isn't the case at your typical council meeting. So that goes to stand for something in terms of how we feel about these potential ordinance cases. I would hope that if it is referred to the Human Relations Committee, that that's communicated widely to the student body so that we can continue to make our feelings known about these ordinances, because we will continue to make our, our voices known, and they matter as DeKalb residents just as equally. And we definitely look forward to continuing to express how we feel about this ordinance at the appropriate times. And we hope that all of the mayor's office and whoever puts out the notices for this will do their part to honestly and effectively communicate this to the students in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you give the city clerk your name, please? She's at this end of the table, please. Next.
My name is Tracy Jennings. I'm a junior community leadership and civic engagement major.
Speak into the microphone.
I'm a junior community leadership civic engagement major, the executive manager for the Black Student Union, also speaking on behalf of the students at NIU. We feel as if the local government officials and police shouldn't concern themselves so heavily with how people, especially students, rightfully respond to very traumatic events. They should instead turn their attention, efforts, and policy reforms to the issues that incite this kind of uproar, especially in the context of a college town. Somewhere, we're supposed to be encouraged to express ourselves because we are indeed the future. Nothing about our actions have been remotely close to unlawful in the past, even when they should have been. Last year, we were marching for Black Lives Matter in front of the DeKalb Police Station on Lincoln Highway, and a student by the name of Kezzy Moore was hit by a car. We had every right to be upset, but we still remain peaceful in our efforts. And it's no one's place to tell an oppressed group of people how to mourn, especially when the same action is being, isn't being taken against Take Back the Night, the Women's Rights Annual Protest. No one talks about the peace being disturbed when other kids outside of minority races are intoxicated on game day or any other day, or how Greek row is, or how Greek row is also disrupting the peace. We don't need to be policed, especially on minute, minute details. We need people who are in charge of the, of these reforms to listen instead of attempting a unified silencing of people, especially those students and people of color and people who are unhappy with their current living conditions. Thanks.
Thank you. Could you give your name to the city clerk, please?
Good evening, everyone. Amirius Clinton is my name. Clinton. Autumn Snow compared peaceful protesting to mob action, but what's so alarming about students protesting about concerns, whether they be by the university, national outrages, or commemorating slain students? I understand that Mayor Ray reached out to the NIU Student Association for input on these ordinances, but NIU Student Association is not the best representative of the student body. Many students are uneducated as to what goes on in SA, therefore, input is rarely received from students outside of the Student Association. So all that I ask personally is that next time, the correct constraints be put in place where you can reach students who are not in the Student Association. President Baker is, is definitely someone who you can reach out to, who, who will listen to this and, and take this into consideration, and make sure the message is reached by students all over the campus and not just the Student Association. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Amirius. Bessie.
First of all, let me just very briefly talk about this specific ordinance. And I know others have expressed a lot of what has been talked about over the last several days. Many people within the community have been corresponding with each other, corresponding with their aldermen, talking to the police chief, and so on and so forth. And there were many of us who, when we saw this initially, were very, very concerned that it was maybe a little bit too much, though the concern might be safety. And, and I have nothing but the utmost respect for our police force. And, and I can understand safety, believe me, and the concern and the need for safety. But once it was given over to the attorney, it, it just mushroomed into something that it was just really hard to grasp why. It became very, very, very obvious that this item was not properly vetted. That's what's been said from day one. It was not properly vetted. It did not go through any committee. There was not any discussion before through the COW meeting, and so on and so forth. And then there was a plea. I know, you know, I send out information to the council and to my alderman and to the mayor and to the staff, and I said, "Please, you know, table this and then give specific direction as to how it should be handled to your staff." Now, let me talk about how this got even more convoluted.
Okay. Bessie, you're approaching your three minutes.
It got convoluted because council is not following procedure, as Doc, as, as Alderman Baker tried to explain. It should have been left alone. Just leave it alone where it was and then allow the council to discuss it at its second reading, and then it could have moved to table it and given direction as to where it should go. And if the council would take some advice, I do understand procedure, Alderman, Mark Ward, I do. Believe me, I understand procedure. Putting items on the consent agenda, like resolutions, and I've given you a piece of paper to try to ex- paper to try to explain that, putting items like resolutions that involve expenditures and ordinances that are up for second reading on a consent agenda is wrong. Resolutions need to be vetted, each one, each one needs to be explained, especially if there's expenditures involved, and certainly an ordinance for second reading Alderman Baker wasn't here for last time. So that means he doesn't get a chance to get input if you're going to be doing that on a second reading. The reason for a second reading is so the public has an opportunity to speak. Council, you are not following procedure.
Thank you, Bessie. Bill Moore. Bill?
I am Bill Moore from Ward 2, and I appreciate the indulgence of the council in all of this matters, and especially appreciate the fact that you have handled this tonight in a way of letting more input into the decision-making. I myself see the good news here, and that is, in spite of the divisions, I do not think there is any group, whether it's the unionists or the students or the peace advocates or any of the groups that need to have an assembly to redress grievances, which the Constitution allows. I don't think there's anybody here that does not believe your avowed purpose, that that kind of assembly should be safe. That's where we begin. Now, you could put that in your title rather than an intimidating. I have three points which I hopefully some of you have read. I won't go into them, I'll just name the three, and that is, I do not feel that this ordinance meets the avowed intent of your claim in the beginning, that it should be a safe environment, is the purpose, to protect the assembly, that it is a safe event. And my concerns are three things that I think are not clear that need to be cleared, and that is, there's an intimidating tone, and there's also a sense that it's an unbalanced procedures. You have 20 procedures for citizens, two procedures for the law enforcement agents. And thirdly, the criteria of deciding when it's time to disperse in a peaceful assembly is so poorly defined as one that has to have objective and subjective observations, but no definition of a standard of an objective observation. This needs to be rewritten thoroughly and thoughtfully, and I greatly appreciate your opportunity to give us all a chance to make that input.
Thank you.
This is the first time I've ever had been asked for a perf search, so I've come to plenty of city council meetings. Although I will say that it was a lot easier to make city council meetings when they started at seven o'clock and not six, and the committee of the whole meeting starts at five. Boy, you really don't want people who work to come to meetings if you have something scheduled at five o'clock. So I can't guarantee I might be here for whatever scheduled meeting you might have at some other later point. So G7, item 15, engaging in a conduct that requires the issuance of a mass gathering permit. Well, how do I know if I show up to a group of people if they have a permit or not? And that brings me to G8 and number eight, pepper spray. I usually carry pepper spray. It's in my car because I took it off before I came in here, but I usually have it with me. So let's say I show up to a group of people, which I, hey, I'm curious, there's a group of people, I'm going to come check it out, and I don't know it's unlawful, and I have pepper spray on me. I'm going to get nailed if you leave it like it is. And second of all, on that same thing, number three, any wood, plastic composite, blah, 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 anything larger than circumference of four inches if the ordinances stay as written as proposed. You've made Brother Jed's crucifix illegal if it stays as is. So if Brother Jed shows up, are you going to arrest him?
Thank you. Jennifer.
Jennifer, I turned in my form, so I think I'm okay. First of all, thank you. What I wanted to just comment is, given the change in tonight's ordinances of being able to postpone it to the HRC, just a request, on behalf of many of the students in our university, as well as certainly the community, if you can clarify for us as this goes forward onto the HRC, just how the process will go forward so that our campus, as well as our community, can know how they can give thoughtful input. Some folks may not be familiar with how you're going to go through this process for giving comments in the HRC, just so they can know how this is going to work through. I think that would be very, very helpful. And then, just a quick moment, could I ask all of our students from Northern Illinois University who came to speak to this agenda item just to stand up for a moment? This is a proud civic engagement between the community and the university, so thank you all for coming out this evening. This is just a great moment, I think, to show how the community and the university, as well as the numerous other residents who spoke to this issue tonight, care about the issues of this community. So thank you for letting us all comment tonight. Thank you for continuing to give clarity on how we can continue to meaningfully give input. And as a university, as administration staff and students, we have a lot to talk about. So if you can let us know how we can engage in that process, I know we would all appreciate it very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer. And I trust the media, we certainly will publicize through press release the process for further discussion. I trust the media will work to educate the public regarding the constitutional basis of the ordinances, the language as it moves forward and as it moves through discussion. Moving on then, is anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Larry Apperson, and I'm the chair of the Human Relations Commission. First of all, thanks and congratulations to everyone that showed up today, particularly the NIU students. You remind me, and I'm showing my age, of a few years at the University of Wisconsin-Madison back in the 60s, when I spent my last semester of my senior year in more demonstrations than I did in the classroom. You may recall, this was one of the campuses that was shut down, had National Guard on campus, and quite a number of lawfully started assemblies that deteriorated for one reason or another into what would be termed unlawful assemblies and ensuing kinds of chaos, et cetera. I might mention that in that process of my own personal experiences with demonstrations, I have witnessed the enforcement authorities do heroic things to try to maintain order, and I've also witnessed them do some things around the alleyways to the demonstrators that were not heroic. In turn, I also witnessed groups of students doing that around the corner to law enforcement officials. Neither parties involved were doing our peaceful assemblies nor maintaining them the way it should have been. I think what we have here is an important issue that goes beyond just the rights of assembly. I think what we have is a great opportunity in DeKalb to hear the voices of all individuals that make up DeKalb. And the HRC certainly can't pledge that we can come up with some perfect resolution, but we do want to hear from you. Please, your friends, your fellow students, if you want to talk with us, please leave your name out on the list that Dean, our city attorney, mentioned. It's very difficult with newspapers alone in this community to get to all the voices. So we need to all take responsibility to do that, and please do. And with that, I just want to commend the alderpersons, the mayor, the city staff. I don't really believe, from all of those individuals that I know, including many students on the campus, I think we can resolve this. Our meetings are the first Tuesday of the month, starting at 6:30, and obviously, we do have quite full agendas. We're dealing with many, many topics, but we'll, you know, but that's one of the reasons that I think Jennifer's concept of getting out the word of how to get the input is going to be important, because we need to do it conveniently for people. We have a great many different schedules here in this community, and we'll put our heads together and try and come up with a method and get that word out.
Is your meeting right here in this chamber?
It's typically been here on the second floor recently, in the conference room that's just down the hall, and I'm sure we can always come to a larger setting, you know, if we need to.
Larry, I realize you have a number of topics within that HRC purview.
Yeah.
The agenda is available 48 hours ahead of that
Correct.
Tuesday
Yes.
Meeting.
Yes. It is on the website, so.
Thank you.
Rosemary Forier, I teach history at Northern Illinois University. I have deep concerns about the evidence issues here. There was a lot that was said in the papers, and I would just like to know, where did this ordinance come from? So I would like, if you're addressing this, I think citizens have the right to know where this came from. I understood, in other words, did Chief Lowry write it, or did it come from someplace else? I have deep concerns because I see these kinds of ordinances coming from across the country, and I have, I guess, grave suspicions about the American Legislative Exchange Commission and their nasty role in U.S. society, so I'd like to actually have that revealed to the citizens if there's, if somebody else wrote this besides, you know, Chief Lowry or who, you know, we'd like to know where this ordinance came from. And the other thing, oh.
Emery, go ahead.
Who wrote this?
Finish, please.
Oh, so that's what, I mean, I didn't know if I could ask that question, but it is sort of a rhetorical question. The other is, when you investigate this, I think history has a specific evidence-based role in thinking about these ordinances. I am really perplexed at the low level of understanding of what relationship there is between protest and democracy that's evidenced in the assumptions of this ordinance. And I think a number of people have spoken to it, but I will say, I am somebody, I really think this ordinance ought to just be dumped.
Thank you.
It should not be, if we're living in a democracy, this isn't necessary, and it's simply something that casts a pall, so.
Thank you. Emery, for the benefit of the public, could you just review the process in which ordinances are drafted and presented to council?
Sure. I mean, it starts either with an item that were directed by councils, something that comes up through discussion, or if based on research from staff, that there's something that we feel that needs to be reviewed by council, what best practices are. To address these specific questions, number one, at the last city council meeting, a detailed presentation was given, which kind of gives some of the background, so if you want to review it, I'd strongly suggest taking a look at, I'm trying to think if the video's posted. If not, we can make sure it's posted conveniently on the website or with a connection to YouTube, because I think that's where we have our videos, so you can take a look at that. But number two, when this goes to HRC, the first thing I would recommend at HRC is that either Chief Lowry or someone from the police department give a refresher on that presentation addressing those specific questions, because there are reasons that this was going forward. And I think the general perception here by many of the people here tonight is it's the mass demonstrations that happened on NIU's campus, and if you were here two weeks ago during the presentation, you would see some of the reasoning was related to issues that have been developed off-campus. But what I would suggest, especially for those that are interested particularly in this item, is come to that HRC meeting where someone from the police department, whether it's Chief Lowry or a member of staff, can make that presentation and go through that in depth.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Baker?
I carefully want to choose my words here. Alderman Snow brought up a point that was very compelling. That's the only thing that I saw compelling the whole evening about that we should address. If there are some specific points that need to be clarified, such as the not wanting to defer to the state law where any two people could trigger an arrest of a group of two or more, that is one thing. But I'm confused right now, because I've not seen this done ever to this point. It is quite clear that whatever ordinances were voted through on the first reading, by the time they get sifted through committees, it's going to be a completely different baby. And I would hope that it comes back just for first reading as something new, which is why I wanted this to come for a vote, be voted down, and then start from scratch. So that's, my first question will be, is this going to come back as a first reading?
Dave, I described it will come back to committee of the whole. It will go through a first reading and a second reading.
So we're starting over. That's great news. But just as a point of order at this moment, the four people
I should say, it may come back. If HRC reviews it, it may come back to committee of the whole.
Well, how can you say may come back? You've already stated earlier that it would come back, and that's the procedure that everyone voted on. If there's two people out of the four that agree with me that now it's super gray, because the mayor just used the word "may" and they want to reconsider their vote, so we can vote this thing down once and for all and not waste a lot of time, this is your opportunity right now.
Dave, I'm not presuming what the HRC is going to come out with. We have asked them to review the ordinance.
Well, why wouldn't it come back to committee of the whole for further discussion at that point? Whatever their recommendations are.
The topic can certainly come back to committee of the whole, which is how the ordinance process progresses.
But I don't want it to come back as a second reading and then just voted right through.
It won't.
To be perfectly clear, the ordinance will not return as an ordinance for second reading without coming to the committee of the whole first. If the ordinance, whatever the result of the HRC process is, and after we review this further, we will report back to the city council at a committee of the whole meeting what our recommendation is before this appears on a city council meeting agenda again.
Thank you. Okay. Are there others wishing to speak? I think we've honored those that wish to speak. Could you come to the podium and speak, please, in the microphone?
Okay. My name is Katie Spatter. Thank you for not making me say my address. I really appreciate that change. I live in, I live in Kate's Ward. I'm a little concerned about something. So if I'm not mistaken, the reason for this is because of issues that have happened off-campus, correct? Because that is what you said, right? That is what you said? Or did I misunderstand?
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yes. But when you look at the memo, this is a concern to me, and I don't know, maybe it's nothing, but I don't think it's just nothing. This says, "The city currently does not have an ordinance addressing unlawful assemblies within the corporate limits. Based on a review of the experiences of other communities, other communities, it is recommended to adopt such an ordinance, both to protect public safety and to protect the rights of the public to peaceably assemble." So my question is, where So, my question is, where off-campus has any of this ever happened? It hasn't. Just like, they have all said, "We have never, oh, we've never had any issues like this here." Yet we're treating this community just like what has happened, where there have been issues, but those issues have been rightfully done, for good reason. And yet, we are taking this into something that is not. And I have a huge problem with that. And that is why I wanted to know myself, where this, really, where it did originate from? Because I'll be honest with you, what I thought was because you were anticipating something to happen, because of Quintonio Davis's death. Murder. That is exactly it. And I really, I'm sorry, but you know me, you've all known me. But, you know, I, I really take issue, because this is about trust, a trust. Trust within the city of DeKalb, our police departments, departments, and NAU, there has to be a trust. And there isn't any, and rightfully so, because this was done without them here. Thank you.
Thank you.
City manager.
Mayor, I'd like to ask Police Chief Lowry to comment. I don't know the exact location, but if he could explain some of the experience with the video that was shown at last council meeting, if you could comment what you'd want to share.
Let me have it queued up.
Sure, as Chief Lowry has a nine-slide presentation that he's prepared to give, to give a brief overview that may address some of the questions that have been asked here tonight. We were going to do it if this item was going forward, but I think in light of the questions, we'll get the slides loaded, and the chief will be able to explain the particular locations we've had issues with, and it has been off-campus.
Council, staff, community, thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk tonight. We had planned this originally, and as I, as I reflect back on this, I think, I think there are things we definitely could have done better, and I'll take, I'll take the onus of that. But, from my perspective, I want you to know where this came from. This had nothing to do with the tragic loss of life of a NIU student in the city of Chicago. This had nothing to do with, it had something to do with some of the events we've had here. And we have had some, that I'll show you in a video in just a second. We've had some situations that, whether planned or not, went awry. The impetus of the law, from my perspective, and I think to be fair to everyone, is based on the fact that the police have not always done a good job handling demonstrations. I think we can all agree on that, we've seen it. So, as the law has evolved, and as the incidents in other communities have evolved, it's been noted that there are a couple of standout items where the police could have seriously done a much better job. For example, these seem like so much common sense, but they're written into the ordinance. For example, when you ask someone to leave, you can't surround them if something's going awry in the demonstration. And this, this ordinance isn't targeting any type of demonstration whatsoever. Let me try and go through this presentation, to give you the background on it. But it all began when we were trying to prepare to be, to be more responsive in handling demonstrations in our community. So I made the choice to send the gentleman who was here to make the presentation last two weeks ago, Sergeant Woodruff, to Anniston, Alabama, to the Homeland Security, basically crowd management and learn how to do the right thing school for the police. So it, on our first slide, we're talking about the purpose of this was recommending a strategy. There was no ill-will, or no ill-intent involved. We wanted to use an ordinance to promote safe and lawful assemblies while enhancing everyone's right to speak. And what I mean by that is, there are some times when people demonstrate, they're doing absolutely the right thing. And it's not the police's job to determine whether their views are right or not. It's our job to protect those who are demonstrating their rights. However, there are, at times, people who come to infiltrate those demonstrations, that don't have good intent for the demonstrators. And those are the situations we're trying to protect ourselves from. And the personal example I have is, a long time ago, this is my thirty, going into my 37th year in law enforcement, I was standing in skirmish line at a Ku Klux Klan rally, where virtually no one in the community agreed with what they had to say, but we had to protect their rights. But mine was the first skirmish line to make arrests in that, in that meet, in that assembly, in that demonstration. And during the course of that demonstration, there were items thrown at the police, such as nuts and bolts, items that had been secreted into the demonstration, and it was all for bad intent, but we still had an obligation to protect it. How we process those demonstrations has to be pure. And it has to be pure in the sense that it's not for the police to judge the motivation for a demonstration, as long as it's lawfully assembled. And it's also part of the community's responsibility to, anyone who decides to demonstrate must also be cognizant of the other people in the community that may have opposing views, or may not want to be part of blockading a street, or doing something of that order. So it's not just the rights of the demonstrators that the police have to observe, it's the rights of all people. And it is, it's a tenuous balance. So in sending that officer to, or that sergeant to Anniston, Alabama, to learn how to do things right, this proposed ordinance in this format came forward from Homeland Security to us. That's how the whole process began, specifically with these two ordinances. Then we, our representative got with city attorney, and asked for assistance in writing those. That's the beginning of it. Let me try and go through this a little bit more. You know, this is more of a, hey, here's our, here's where our heart's at. I think if anybody of you have been in this community long enough, you've known what I've tried to do with this community, as far as community relations goes, as far as working with, with all people. Camp Power came out of the police department under my, under my authority. That's where it originated. There's no bad intent coming out of that. When I look at what our mission statement is, "The members of DeKalb Police Department are committed to reducing crime and hands, and enhancing the quality of life through an active partnership with our community." There's no backdoor on that for me. You know, this is just making reference to goals and objectives in regard to the ordinance, but I think it's important to understand that the intent of the ordinance was to prolong the right to be civilly disobedient, to be right, the right to be demonstrators, the right to do things. And I participated in a panel discussion a short time ago, honoring Martin Luther King, and peaceful, peaceful demonstration and non-violent demonstration doesn't mean inaction. And knowing that, the police have to be able to address that need, and do it in a manner that's conducive to promote those rights. Let me talk just for, a couple of bullet points on why we're here today, or where we are today. There are contemporary examples throughout our country of mass gatherings that have ended in unlawful acts highlighted by violence. And that's not tagging the demonstrations, or the demonstrators, as being the violators in all sense. I think the police have had some issues in how they've processed demonstrations, it's clear. So it's appropriate for us to frame, and I think this is, I know the intent of this ordinance was, was to frame the police response. And I'm not a lawyer, I have to rely on lawyers, I don't know how many of you in here are lawyers, but it's important to know that these, these ordinances were properly vetted. That every university city of any size in this state has an ordinance of this nature. It's almost universally, universally accepted practice in this country to have an unlawful assemblies ordinance. We're just way behind the times. I think the biggest mistake was timing on our part, to be honest with you. In some ways, I think it could have been very easily, could have offended people. And I, and I'll take the hit for that, I apologize for that. Again, the challenge is to, is how do we make sure we protect everyone's right to assemble and speak freely, while also protecting everyone's safety? That's a huge dilemma for us. So when we looked at the weapons, at unlawful assemblies ordinance, and again, it, it certainly can be reworked, and I guess at the heart of this is, if the community's perception is that this is not a good situation, and they don't even want to walk down that road, I can rely on state statutes. Unfortunately, a state statute may bring a misdemeanor conviction or felony conviction in a situation where it may not be warranted, and we have no recourse through city ordinance, which is a petty offense, a non-jailable offense. I equate it to a traffic citation, or a parking ticket. In our, in our community, the right to assemble and speak freely has often been accomplished without incident, no question about it. While others at times have erupted into unlawful acts, some of which have jeopardized our community. And I'll show you a short video that we showed before, a matter of a minute or so. Where in the summer of 2012, we had three days of street takeovers in the city, not for a cause, not for, to redress a grievance, but simply several hundred, estimated between six and eight hundred, people took over a street in Greek Row for three days, and wouldn't allow the police to pass, wouldn't allow fire to pass, couldn't get an ambulance through if we needed to. Citizens were afraid to come out of their house. We did everything to de-escalate it. And I'll be honest with you, we were de-escalating because we didn't have the resources to deal with it. At the end of it, there was some violence, there were some aggravated batteries and batteries, there were some bottles thrown, and there were some reports that some of the people in the gathering had concealed weapons. I can't confirm or deny those. Nonetheless, it was an unsanctioned event that caused a neighborhood to be terrorized over a period of three days. That was an example by which some of this, this process has evolved. I'll also show you in just a minute another video more recently, that does have to do with one of the items that was mentioned in regard to students who did protest, the, or were demonstrating on the tragic death of Michael Brown in Ferguson, Missouri. And I think there were very many good points about that, but there were also some things that happened that I think illustrate the fact that if we don't go prepared, or we don't have a plan, and either the demonstrators or the police act inappropriately, or not working together, there's a greater chance for risk to the community. And I get it, we can't eliminate all risk, I get that. From my perspective, it's failing to prepare for a mass gathering will end in tragic situations like in Ferguson. I don't think anyone in law enforcement in this country can take an honest look at that situation, and, and look at that with any degree of pride, or that that was handled appropriately. I think it was a lesson for reform across the country, which again, is why we sent people to, or sent an officer to Anniston, Alabama, why we wanted to get the best practices, why we wanted someone to tell us what the best ways to go were, and how to work it within the framework of the law. Again, if you tell people to leave, you make an announcement, tell them to leave, you can't surround them and prevent them from leaving. Which is one of, just a small example. So how did we get here? I talked to you a little bit about the August 12 scenario. What I'd like to do now is, go ahead and play the video. This is a little difficult to see. This is the beginning of the, the street takeovers in August of 12.
Is this DeKalb?
This is DeKalb, this is Edgbrook Drive, in the 800 block.
2012, right?
2012.
Four years ago.
Yes. Yep. So, imagine, imagine if you're in the neighborhood, and that neighborhood isn't all students. Imagine if you're in that neighborhood, and many, many of those folks in that neighborhood are non-university students. They are families with children. And this is what they looked out on, for three nights, for eight to 12 hours a night. Fortunately, no one was seriously injured. Fortunately, the matter was, was resolved, and it hasn't occurred since. Let me talk to you a little bit about the, the killing of Michael Brown by the police in Ferguson. That touched off demonstrations across our country. And the students, rightfully so, in the, in our university community, said, "We want to symbolically protest what's going on." I got that. For any of you who were involved in that demonstration, the coordinators of that discussed it with me. I offered to have them come to the front of the station, I actually asked them to go to the front lawn, because I knew getting close to the road was going to be problematic, with Lincoln Highway as busy as it is. And I think there was a pretty high degree of cooperation between the students and the police to do the right thing. Really, I think there were a couple of things learned. I think the students saw some things that, they saw some of the ugliness that can exist when people drove by and said things to them as they were demonstrating. But they also saw what one incident, and the incident that the, I believe the young lady mentioned, where a female student, who was, I believe with child, as I recall, was struck by a motor vehicle, not struck to the point where she required transport to the hospital, but she was struck, it's as simple as that. And there was an emotional reaction, an emotional reaction to the incident. Some argue on both sides. It could have been, their emotional reaction could have been justified, some would say maybe it wasn't. It's not the police's responsibility to judge that. What we're responsible for is to ensure the safety. And you'll see what occurs in that video. This one's a little bit longer, so bear with me, and it's a time-lapse video, so if we While we're getting it queued up, this, this takes place in front of the police station in 700 block of West Lincoln Highway, in December of last year. I'm sorry, of '14. We're working on some technical difficulties here, I see. I'll try to give a couple more talking points to fill the void here, but since the incidents occurred that we have discussed, the police department conducted a review of our crowd management practices, instituted a variety of training initiatives, from de-escalation techniques to management of mass gatherings. We met with demonstrators to discuss the mass gatherings, increased our community relations programming, and strove to enhance communication with our, our community. We've also reviewed recent mass gatherings throughout our nation to see what's gone wrong, what's worked well, and what hasn't. And we want to, above all, facilitate our community's right, and I agree with everyone who spoke on, on the universal right to assemble and free speech, to ensure that everyone has that opportunity, especially in a college town, that's really what we're all about. The goal is to develop, though, for us, the best practices to implement these strat, excuse me, these strategies, and prevent a mass gathering from transforming into something violent and unlawful. Jordan, would you check and see if there's any situation? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Can I make a, can I make a statement while, in regard to this? Because I think that it's really revealing, and I appreciate the information about Homeland Security, but I just want to tell you a story about, I had a group of students who took over a part of NIU, and I went and talked to the judicial officer while they were there, and he said, "They were going to be threatened with suspension if they didn't stop that sitting." That's one thing, but he also told me, this is during the Homeland Security campaign, he said, "Look, you should know that I've just been in contact with Homeland Security, and Homeland Security is asking us for a list of groups that would be rounded up in the event of a terrorist attack." the event of a terrorist attack." I, I said, "You wouldn't think that a student is," they were protesting sweatshop goods, believe it or not, universities use sweatshop goods. I said, "You wouldn't think that a student group, that Homeland Security would want them targeted?" And he said, "They want a list of students who protest." And so I want to say that Homeland Security is not some group that, whose procedures I respect as the last word on protests.
Are we ready back there for the video? Do we know? I, again, this is the elephant in the room trying to get the video to work. Let me talk to you a little bit about where we're going to go on the next slide. Oh, sorry.
Why is the video sound like?
I'm sorry.
Why is the video sound like?
Because the, the, the cameras that were used were motion activated, and so sometimes when there wasn't enough motion, it would kick. And then this video goes on for 30 or 40 minutes. So we took it from, and, and I'll, let me try to explain where this red arrow is.
So it's a modified video?
It's, it is changed, but that, the video is available. If you'd like, come to the station and see it in its entirety. Okay. What you just saw was the vehicle that had struck the girl in what was a peaceful demonstration, then starts, emotions start to come out. Now, the person in the car was ultimately arrested. You know, in the control room, Jeff, could we back it up to the original arrow and start it again, just so I can make sure everybody's on the same page? So the arrow is when the, when the vehicle comes into the crowd. And you can see there are still people in the intersection, there are people alongside, there was probably 60 to 70 people in this demonstration that evening, somewhere in that number. And the, the arrow is where the vehicle enters into the crowd. Based on the narrative that I have learned from this, the driver was upset because there was some blockage of the road. It doesn't, it didn't justify his actions by any stretch of the imagination. And then go ahead, Jeff, you can start it again. So the arrow proceeds through with the vehicle proceeding through. And the driver pulling into the police station. It's difficult to see, and again, these are security cameras that are portraying this, but you can begin to see police officers trying to pull or get people away from the car, because we were going to extract the driver and arrest him. But again, the point is not to assess right or wrong on any of the participants at this point in time, but just to say it only takes a moment for something to go awry where it can create a situation. And again, if anybody would like to see the entire context of this video, I'd be happy to host it at the station, and welcome you to come in.
What does it show? What in your mind doesn't show?
Well, if I, to explain that a little bit better, what has happened is, there were some people that were upset with the driver, and we all understand why, and began to strike the car, become aggressive with the driver. So it was almost like, even though there was a wrong at the front end, you'll add each two wrongs, don't make a right, not judging anybody, but saying that, the reason I use this as an example was, it could be a touchoff point for something turning into something more unlawful.
So why did this start the whole discussion? Rather than having ordinances? I mean, you're making an interesting case, but, you know, the thing started with two ordinances two weeks ago, rather than, this is the beginning of a discussion so the communities can work together and figure out how to solve the problems. You are so concerned about what's very real, and the community's concerned with their problems, rather than having ordinances.
I'm going to bring us to a point of order. I don't want to start processing the HRC discussion that I've referred to that group. Gene, you were asked to portray where the ordinance came from. If you could continue and wrap up, please.
Yes, and I'd be, Mr. Rubin, I'd be happy to address your concerns. At the end of the day, things, things probably could have been done better. The point from now is, how do we make them right here going out?
Right.
The measures we've taken in regard to some of the things we saw and some of the things we discussed, again, we've done a complete debriefing of mass gatherings that have occurred within our community, and it ranges from the protesters on the corner of, first and Lincoln Highway, who are there weekly without any issue, to situations in town, really not related to anything on campus. All of the situations on campus have been very orderly and peaceful, but to situations off-campus that have created some problems and some concerns. We've also reviewed trans-nationwide recent mass gatherings, what's gone right and what's gone wrong. A view of ordinances implemented by other communities, including those that host colleges and universities. And I think, Herb, this goes to your point. Our, and I, and I'll, I'll take the hit for this. From my end, I should have saw, I should have seen, should have seen, what, what was coming down the road, but having been advised of what the best principles were, to us, on the, on the police level, it's, it did not seem in any way, shape, or form like it was taking anything away, it was enhancing, because we were trying to define what was a peaceful and what was a lawful assembly, in large part, to, to inform people who want to participate in those, how to partake in them lawfully. And I'm sure more of this discussion will come out in the HRC. There was a legal analysis to ensure the constitutionality of the proposed ordinance and a review of best police practices. I have complete confidence in the legal review. I know many of us have different opinions on that, but the legal review I've seen and the case law I've seen in regards to, to this ordinance and to mass gatherings in general, I think, I think we're okay, but I'll leave that up to the HRC and the lawyers to figure out. We sought the, the input from other leaders in law enforcement, I sought the input from the faith-based community, and I did reach out to one of the HRC commission members to get their input as well. Law enforcement leaders locally were, felt comfortable with the ordinance. The faith-based community, I chose a good friend of mine, an African-American pastor here in town, who I rely on for advice and counsel, to review it, and sought his input. And I, I sought a female pastor's input, a white female pastor's input here in town as well. Again, there's more that can be done and more that can be vetted. I also, my staff and I took the time to meet with the St. Louis County Commander, who was in, in charge of many of the operations in Ferguson, Missouri. Not on the side of the Ferguson Police Department, but on the agencies that came in to try and fix what had gone wrong. And we tried to learn from him what had gone right and what had gone wrong there, and how not to act, because we didn't want that to happen here. And if you walk away from anything from here tonight, I hope you believe that there was no mal-intent with this. And if there, if you believe that, then it's my fault. It's me, it's me. I'm accountable for that. We're almost done. Lastly, what will the ordinance do? It was our intent that the ordinance had provided clear language for the police when taking enforcement action, and decreased the level of subjective decision-making. When you look at mob action, and I'm glad Alderman Snow mentioned it, it's, it's like two or more people is, is, is the numbers criteria. We went to a 10 minimum, and that's really on the outside of what most of these ordinances are, whether it's Champagne, Carbondale, Macomb. They're all talking two to three, very low numbers. We went to 10, and it wasn't a random arbitrary decision, it was a decision based on the amount of staffing we have available on any given shift to deal with a problem if it began to get out of control.
Please be honest about that, though. That is not what we're in the first.
I'd like to call us to a point of order and ask the chief to wrap up, please.
Ma'am, if you'd like to discuss this with me, I'd be happy to. It'll provide a greater level of constitution protect, constitutional protection for those who assemble in a lawful manner and wish to exercise their rights to speak freely. It establishes what I consider our fair rules of engagement regarding how the police behave, but also how the participants are expected to behave. It gives the police an enforcement tool, and this is the one for me that is, is key, and I think it's been lost in the translation, is the lowest-level tool from an enforcement perspective to de-escalate a situation without a full custody arrest. If there's a way to begin to get someone to slow down and start thinking about something that they may have an idea that they want to do that may not be lawful, if we have a sanction, we can, we can intervene. This is assuming we've done everything else we can, talking to them, negotiating, trying to get a peaceful resolution without arrest. A city ordinance violation is the lowest possible sanction there is. It prevents us from throwing handcuffs on someone in a demonstration and hauling them off. It allows us to pull them to the side, begin the dialogue, let them know that there is accountability in their actions, and hopefully de-escalate a situation before it goes to a full arrest. I don't think there's anyone in the room, especially a student, trying to start off in life doing the right thing, to get, to get arrested on a misdemeanor or felony and then have to carry that the rest of their lives. It's simply not worth it. I'm going to go ahead and move to close. I hope this has helped in some way. None of this is perfect. The process isn't perfect. I hope this community realizes that we tried, we're trying to do the right thing, and how we move forward now is how we're trying to do the right thing. I'm going to tell you how I view it. I look at this as an opportunity. We either work together and talk together about it, or we, we take polar opposite ends of this, and no, there's no resolution to it. But I picked out this next one. I don't know. Can you pop that slide presentation back up, Jeff? Well, I won't, I won't keep you for an hour waiting for that. There we go. There's the last slide. So, these two pictures, thank God for the internet, right? The one on the left is a demonstration on campus in the '60s. The one on the right is also from a demonstration in DeKalb from the '60s. So it's, it's not a matter of saying what's right or wrong, it's only saying that these are problems that we've been dealing with for decades, decades, and we hope to do the right thing. So I hope you got some benefit from this, and if anyone has any questions, I'll be here to answer them. Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much. We'll proceed then with the rest of our agenda this evening. We have before us a consent agenda. I'd like to review the items that are contained in that. Approval of city council minutes, approval of executive session minutes, authorization for partial release, partial release of minutes of the regular meeting executive session of January 12th, 2015. Under receive and file, we've got accounts payable and payroll through January 25th, 2016, in the amount of $4,133,480.21. We have investment and bank balance summary through December of 2015, year-to-date revenues, expenditures for the general fund through December of 2015. FY 2016 Human Services Funding Second Quarter Report is contained the Resolution 2016-005, authorizing payments to the Illinois Fire Store for fire gear and fire equipment in excess of $20,000. Resolution 2016-006, appropriating $19,079.51 for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code for the exceeded estimate of the purchase of electricity. Resolution 2016-007, authorizing a transfer of funds of $31,424.08 from the general fund to the motor fuel tax fund to comply with the motor fuel tax compliance audit review of January 1st, 2008, through December 31st, 2014. And ordinance 2016-004, amending Chapter 9, Establishment of Fees, Section 9.05, Engineering Plan Review and Inspection Fees. Before us in second reading. I would ask for approval on the consent, uh, content of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Jen, I'd like to ask for removal of item F8, please.
F8, okay. We've removed F7, I'll also remove F8 then. With the...
F2C, please.
Okay. With those amendments, is there a motion to approve the items on consent agenda, to approve the items contained on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marquardt, roll call.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Alderman Snow, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marquardt, roll call.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. F2C, year-to-date revenues and expenditures for the general fund through December 15th, 2015. Alderman Baker.
I'm just trying to get a handle on something, Mayor, that I've asked you several times about, and since it's in the agenda now, just go straight to the, the point. Three times, Frieder's Law, this is for you, Dean, maybe you can cut right through it and explain it to me. I see listed 104,040 with a balance due of 3,468, but then I see it broken out in the workers' comp fund and the liability and property insurance for that same amount again. Is your budget three times 140,040, or is it one times 140, 104,000? I mean, I, I, I have to go on record as saying that for years, I pushed for an outside law firm to come in to replace employees, and I'm very satisfied that we have not changed that process, and we still have an outside law firm. But I've lost handle on the budget. Last time that I saw any numbers, I thought that you were running about 175,000 a year. If you could explain where we've ended up.
What page are you on, Dave?
Well, it shows up in several places.
Are you looking at the bills list? Isn't, you're not looking at the year-to-date revenue expenditure report, you're looking at the bills list, I believe?
Well, it was the general fund balances and, yeah, accounts payable, I guess.
The accounts payable is seen, correct. The report we print out of MSI, it's total vendor dollars, so it's not necessarily showing total just by fund. So, no, it is a little misleading of a report. We have been working on a better report to get out, but, yeah, I can explain to you the report after the meeting if you'd like. But it's showing total for the vendor, even though part of it's under the general fund, that's total for the vendor, that vendor can be broken out amongst several funds. And we do break fees, attorney fees, into general fund, water, there's some under water fund, there's some under workers' comp fund, so.
I, okay, you understand my confusion because, and you just explained it more eloquently than I could have hoped, but it still brings back the question of how can we, as a council, track and audit when we ask our attorney to do something, what we're spending when we ask him to do that? He's not a fixed cost of, he's going to be here anyway, like an employee, and I think we need to get some sort of an idea of, of what the budget is and how we're doing, maybe a report like, um...
It's a fixed contracted amount, Dave.
But if we ask him to put in more hours, then...
It's a fixed contracted amount.
Where I put in more hours, I put in more hours. There's not any change in the fees, there's not an increase.
So what are we at in budget right now? 204 or 30, 312, 104? I'm just, people ask me, and I don't have a handle on it, I'm sorry.
The fees for Dean's services will come exactly at budgeted costs. It's a fixed, it's a fixed amount that we know at budget time, and that's what we budget for, and that's what we spend very much.
Kathy, could you look up that number and get that back to Alderman Baker, please?
I certainly can. Yep. I can get you the exact number.
Is there a motion to approve 2C, year-to-date revenues and expenditures for the general fund through December 2015?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Baker, roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow? Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Ordinance 2016-001, amending Chapter 54, Financial Administration, Section 54.04, Budget Officer, Section 54.05, Municipal and Fiscal Year, and Section 54.06, Annual Budget. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Snow. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markwart. Discussion. Alderman Noriko.
As I was considering the change in the fiscal year, I recognized that it makes a great deal of sense. That being said, however, this may not be the best time to do it. My concern is that the city is facing a number of serious issues that will require staff's attention and an already busy staff having to focus more time. And so, to also take on the issue of basically preparing two budgets, two audits, having to undoubtedly answer more questions from residents because, you know, comparison issues and so forth, I was concerned and, you know, just how much is reasonable to assume at one time?
Director Haley, you want to just talk about the process, and then I'll be glad to jump in as far as staff allocation?
Certainly, it's additional work for staff. I think going through the six-month, if we were to change, starting with the six-month budget process, we would work on the 12-month in sync with that and then refine it come July and August, especially the revenue side, because that's, you know, important to get those as current as possible. So, and the audit being done simultaneously, thankfully, I have a team in the finance department that really does the audit, that takes that away and out of my hands, which frees me up to continue to do the budget, so.
I would just add, and I see our new public works director standing up, and he can attest to part of the reasoning was behind on the capital project, so I'll talk a little bit about why the timing, we think the timing is right this year, but ultimately it's at your purview as to what you want to do. I think the timing works out very well this year because of Director Holdman and the fact that he's now with the city. You know, I'll talk about the two different budgets. If the council were to move forward in switching fiscal years to July 1, our plan would be July 1 to December 31 to have an abbreviated budget, so six-month-year budget, with focusing on really operations. With Director Holdman just coming on board in December, our goal then would be to roll out a full five-year CIP. And you really, the council, at least to the best of my knowledge, has not seen this in the past, and I don't know if the city has ever gone to this level. It's not just showing you five years worth of projects in the water fund. I've already tasked Director Holdman with putting together a comprehensive CIP, so this would be for every fund, including the water fund, which we already have some guidance because we've done the water infrastructure plan that was presented to the council by Burns &amp; McDonnell. But this would include the TIF districts. This would address Alderman Baker's comments during the committee of the whole as to what is the plan for the next five years, really the phase out of the TIF, because we're dealing with a six-year window now. So, it deals with streets. We'd be able to provide scenarios on funding if you want to fund at this level versus if you want to fund at a current level and be able to provide you options. So, if, let's say the council, if you say, "We want to, we don't want to touch the six-month year, we're happy with the July 1 fiscal year," then the reality of when we would be presenting that full CIP will be then for fiscal year 18, so more than a year from now, because Director Holdman needs some time to continue to orient it, and for the sake of the community, he's been here probably a little over a month, probably about the fifth or sixth week of employment, and that would be fine, I mean, if you want to wait. So, we were going to tie in the CIP to the, what I've been calling the fiscal year 17 budget, the one that would be effective January 1 of 2017. So, for the reasons we've mentioned before, why we think it makes sense, as staff were willing to take on that extra burden, I've had multiple conversations with Director Haley, because I know this falls on her and her department in particular. Before she came to work for DeKalb, she was going through this similar transition in Carpentersville, so she had put everything in place to take Carpentersville to that next level, so she knows the process that needs to happen. You know, if the council wants to go in the direction, this year is good. If not, we serve it, you know, we're going to follow whatever direction that you want, but I can tell you, staff, we're ready to take on that extra work, but it's your call.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Baker.
Well, I hope that since I've been fighting for just this type of an accounting fix for about 14 years, that everyone doesn't decide, like, oh, Baker, we don't want to vote on his side. This is on your side if you think it through. It's a perfect storm. It hasn't happened in literally a couple decades. There's five council seats up. I've always argued that even when there's only four council seats up, you could have four new people coming in, and the budget has been discussed by the previous council, and the new people in are going to be like deer in the headlights, as I was, and everyone really is, whether you want to admit it. You come in, you get about two weeks to get your feet going, and then you've got to vote on a budget for a whole year. You're just going to go along with whatever, because you don't know from experience yet what you want. And here we have a chance to get that budget into place and let that new council, that could really be five new people, have literally seven to nine months to figure out what's going on. And that's the way it always should be. And finally, we're at that point through timing that this is absolutely a win-win.
Other discussion? I'll ask for a roll call then. I didn't have you down for Resolution 2016-4. Come to the podium, Beth.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I know everybody's tired. First of all, I want to apologize to Directors Haley and Holdman for, after the last meeting, I was very upset the way this was going, and I snapped at you. There's no reason, even though I don't agree with the procedure that you're following and your explanation, I have absolutely no business snapping at anybody. It's totally out of line, it's not my modus of operation, but even I get frustrated. I've given you a budget thing here, and I would urge you to not change the fiscal year. This will confuse the understanding of the budget for most of the public, even though I understand where you're coming from, Alderman Baker, but when people are candidates, they have plenty of time during the process to become familiar with whatever, and it takes longer than even one or two years to get familiar with the budget. Further, the FAC, that's the Finance Advisory Committee, did not have a complete complement of members in place when this was being voted upon as to whether or not the fiscal budget year should change, so you can't say that this was resoundingly approved by the body that's here to advise the council. And Public Works can do just fine letting the bids and working through the process. It's been done like this for years, and it's good that you're talking about this planning that's been going on, but there's planning in the fiscal, in the budget that needs to be going on. The Finance Advisory Committee needs to be reviewing the budget. They should be meeting right now, as a matter of fact. They need to get more information about a variety of items. Plans need to be made about TIF projects and long-range planning, all of those kinds of things that need to be going on right now, and that is confusing enough and difficult enough to comprehend without adding to it this change, which is going to take a valuable time. And one of the biggest things that council's going to be faced with is, since the budget process will be presented in the spring, you'll be in a position to figure out how to pay for expenditures you're approving now. The revenue is at 2%, and expenditures are at 6%, so you've got more than enough on your plate, and trying to compare figures and understand things is more than enough on your plate. You don't need to change the fiscal year, which will make things even more confusing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, could I address some of the concerns that were just raised? First and foremost, what you'll see in a budget document going forward, should the council decide to switch the fiscal years, you're still going to see the previous fiscal year's data. So, we will show, I mean, if you look at the fiscal year information today, we go back several years, excuse me, so we'll continue to show that. The only thing that you'll know is previous fiscal years would have been July 1 to June 30, and then there'll be a six-month year, and then thereafter it'll be January 1 to December 31. Excuse me, I'm fighting a cold. A second point I wanted to make in regards to the Finance Advisory Committee, we had several different discussions with them on this item. There were five members present the night that the recommendation was made to move forward. The vote was three to two. I believe Director Haley has voiced that before. One of the things that I found interesting, and I'm not sure if we highlighted this to the city council previously, and you can follow up with Chair of the Finance Advisory Committee, Mike Peddell, is he said he was more firmly convinced, based upon the discussions over the property tax levy, that the fiscal year should change, that it was going to be more advantageous for the Finance Advisory Committee and the city council moving forward to have those discussions happening at the same time instead of disjointed. And the last thing I want to talk about is some of the conversations that Director Holdman and I have had in relation to the capital projects. And I know at the last meeting, Director Holdman spoke to this as far as looking at being able to move up the time schedule for when we're going out to bid on these projects. So, as an example, tonight you had City Engineer Liskowski, who gave a phenomenal presentation during the committee of the whole, as to what are the projects that we want to do with streets. Ideally, once we switch, if the council were to switch to the fiscal year, we want to be bidding these out, we want to have these documents being put together in December and going out to bid in January, not bringing the items to the council in January saying, "These are the streets," but have that be part of the budget process so that you know everything that's on your plate and how we would be moving forward. We've talked about his experience in Rockford and some of the procedures that they have there. We talked about the experience I had in Schaumburg and the model that they followed there, and that their goal was to be one of the first communities bidding out their projects so that they got the best prices and they were getting to these contractors first before being on the last of the list. So, if you do decide to switch, we do believe ultimately that this is going to help decrease our capital costs on the side for our capital projects. But once again, the choice is totally yours. We're going to follow whatever course you decide, but I think there are a lot of benefits to the community.
Further discussion from council? We have a motion before us then, and this is on Ordinance 2016-1, correct? Roll call.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2016-004, amending Chapter 9, Establishment of Fees, Section 9.05, Engineering Plan Review and Inspection Fees. Is there a motion? So moved. Been moved by Alderman Markwart. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. Discussion.
John, I just asked for this to be removed, since I wasn't here last time. I'd just like to hear a brief synopsis of what we're doing, please.
Sure. Yeah. Summary, this item originated back in 2014 when we put out that RFQ again for different projects throughout the city, and one of the projects was plan review and inspection services. And we had identified at that time that the amount of plan reviews was beginning to escalate in town, which is a good thing. The commercial development was starting to pick up. What we recognized, though, is that at the staff level, we were struggling to keep up with the amount of reviews that were coming into the office. So, to supplement our efforts, we put out this RFP to get consultants to assist us with this review process. Initially, the way the fee schedule is structured currently is that the engineering fees are calculated based on what's called an engineer's estimate of probable cost. This estimate of cost is based on the design engineer's figures, and based on those figures, then, the city retains 3.5% of this engineer's estimate of probable cost to cover its review and its planned inspections. So, some of the things that we found out that were a little disadvantage of that system was that it didn't necessarily accurately reflect the cost that was being paid by the applicant. So, we especially noticed that it was a concern with the much larger projects. And the example we used at the last meeting was the 3M buildings. So, a project of that magnitude, and I'm going to get my math wrong because I'm bad with percentages, but let's say it's $10 million, then the fees required are going to be about $350,000 for that plan review and inspection services. In reality, I think the cost of the plan review and the inspection services is going to be much closer to about $100,000 to $125,000, which means that had we gone with the route of assessing that 3.5% fee, we would have been overcharging for the work actually performed by about $250,000. So, that could be a disincentive for businesses that want to locate here, and when we were able to contract with Bill Spurges, Kelsey and Associates to bill out the plan review and inspection services directly, they were able to more directly assess the work that was done. So, in this situation, what happens is, we do have three consulting engineers currently available at our disposal that are willing to do plan review and inspections for us. Additionally, we also have the option of the city engineer or staff performing those review services as well. So, what we were thinking is that if staff were to perform these reviews, they would charge at their rate that they're paid here at the city. So, it would include our hourly wage plus our benefits and any overhead that might be included, so it's a fair representation of how we're performing reviews. Initially, the way this fee schedule or the structure is set up, there is a table that I developed as to how much the escrow amount would be in each category. So, what I did is I looked at the projects that we've had over the past year, or not the past year, the most recent projects, I think, in the past six months, and I looked at the fee and how it corresponded to the acres, and basically came up with a development, if it were coming in between zero and a half acres, an average review fee might be about $1,000. And the next category was .51 acres to an acre, and we figured that $2,000 would be a good level for that review. So, what happens is, the applicant now comes, or the applicant under this system will come before the city council, hand in their plans, they'll be asked to sign up a fee schedule or fee reimbursement agreement that would put, based on that table, a certain amount of money into an escrow. So, that escrow would then be drawn upon for the direct costs of this plan review and inspection services, whether it be in-house performed by the city staff, or if it was performed by a consulting engineer. So, basically, the way we looked at it is, the applicant is going to be billed directly for the cost now, and the work performed by staff, rather than overcharging in some instances. And so, that's, the same methodology is going to be proposed for the plan reviews, that the planners are going to perform in community development department. So, I think that's an overview. If there are questions on that, I'd be happy to answer any I can.
If I can add to that for your further background, those funds, as Engineer Liskowski indicated, are placed in escrow. So, if a project is completed and the review doesn't utilize the funds that are posted, those get refunded back to the project developer, and they have an ongoing process for knowing where they're at and what kind of expenses they're incurring. The other aspect of this, as Engineer Liskowski indicated, this is something that we're looking at for the planning as well, because, for example, on the 3M project, that was one that the city did outsource the planning review for that. We had indicated to the council at the last meeting, we will be returning in the very near future with a proposed RFP for planning services, and the idea is to go through a qualification space selection process, similar to what the city used for engineers, where we would develop a short list of qualified planning services, and then when a project comes in, evaluate city workload and... And then, when a project comes in, evaluate city workload and determine if it would be reviewed internally or by an external consultant, and we'd pick from the list of contractors that the City Council has approved utilization. So the hope is that we can process projects more quickly, turning around the reviews faster than we would if we're stacking them up for staff review.
John, if I may, so then, do you anticipate, over the long run, that this will lessen cost for developers coming in?
Yeah, for the bigger developments, yes. And I think for the medium term and smaller developments, it will find out as the process goes, kind of. But I think in overall, there's going to be a cost savings for the bigger projects in town that come in.
Thank you.
Further discussion. Alderman Baker.
In theory, this is exactly what I and, obviously, at the time, the majority of the council pushed for 10 years ago. And in theory, it was already there, available. So it sounds like it's clarification of exactly what was already supposed to be a directive to staff. When a developer comes in or somebody has a project, the first and foremost concern is, how long is this going to take me? And if it's nine weeks versus, hey, I'm willing to pay whatever I have to to go outside and then get it done in two weeks, they're going to pay the two weeks' fee. But as Mac McIntyre asked one important question, have the builders and developers or other interested parties offered any input or been consulted for their opinions? I didn't see them show up tonight.
Yeah. Outside of the initial reading of the ordinance and just some of the conversations I've had with my colleagues in other communities, I haven't reached out to the builders or engineers at this time.
I would suggest that we postpone this and make sure that we have an opportunity here from, say, a representative like Chuck Shepard of the builders and developers to come forward and either give us the blessing or not. My concern has always been, with the smaller developments, not wanting to chase them out. In fact, give them the same kind of discounts or fee waivers that big developments have always gotten from the city when we're under a crunch deadline anyway. Maybe even, like in Algonquin, if the House reaches a certain threshold, like $250,000, maybe give them a nice big check like they do there. I've heard of $12,000 from the city. Thank you for coming to the community.
Alderman Baker, is that a motion?
To postpone, yes.
Is there a second? Hearing none.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marquardt. Discussion. Yes, for Alderman Baker.
This could be just even a procedural thing. How long, so this is now open?
I meant for one meeting. Is that where you're going?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, how long does John have to? Or does people have to comment to John or to the city? What's the procedure?
The purpose of postponement was for one meeting, so that between the media and our staff, reaching out to at least the builders and developers, and if Mac McIntyre has some other groups that he might want to suggest. I didn't ask for anything more than one meeting in my assumption, but if I need to clarify, hopefully, my second will still go along with one meeting postponement.
Yeah, no longer than that. Yeah, it seems like this simplifies things quite a bit, but I am not a builder, so I'm not, and I never have built a new project, so I'm not sure about that.
I can tell, just looking from a practical standpoint, it would not be able to be brought back at the February 8 meeting. Looking at the calendar, today being January 25, agenda items are due in, are due February 4. So this just kind of gives you the timeline that we'd have to turn this around within a week, unless we're able to accomplish that meeting. But, no, I take that back. Agenda items are due this Thursday, January 28, because the agenda will be going out February 3. So that's why the difficulty with the next meeting, but whatever you decide. I just want to let you know, we can't turn around that quickly.
Well, I'm not asking the staff to change anything, just to reach out to the builders and developers, and they can show up at the next meeting to offer their preferable suggestions. Mac, can I get a simple nod, if that's sufficient?
I believe there's a government affairs meeting tomorrow morning at 7:00. I'm not opposed, I just think that you need to get input from the people that you're...
Okay.
I think just the next meeting should work just fine, just postponement of what we were going to do tonight to the next meeting, as simple as that.
Okay. Roll call.
I have a comment.
Alderman Snow, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure. I'm in favor of postponing. I think builders should pay whatever the actual cost is. And apparently, we've had one group subsidizing another group, and so I think it's very appropriate to charge the actual charges to the development project, whatever they are, if they're high or if they're low. One group should not be subsidizing another group. I'm in favor of the proposal as submitted.
To speak to that point, I guess I could add that there have been times in the past where that 3.5% fee that we're assessing right now doesn't cover the review time that myself or the project engineer do put into a project. So there's times where that review process, and it usually is on the smaller projects, we put in more time than that 3.5% really covers for our inspections.
I'm sorry. Ellen DeVita?
Can I make a comment, please? A system such as this does have two benefits. One is that the cost is then borne by the person doing the development, so development's paying its own way, and it's not being subsidized by others, as you've referenced. The other is, there's an efficiency. Then, the onus is put on the person doing the development, to make sure their plans come into us right, they come incorrectly, John's not redesigning them for them. The cost will be less, if they're only reviewed once. So there's a benefit and an incentive for the developer to do things right when submitting the first time.
Okay. The motion before us is to postpone, to table this to the next meeting, to postpone to the next meeting. Roll call.
Finuchin?
No.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Ray?
No.
Four yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Moving to...
Point of order, why did the mayor vote that time?
A majority of the aldermen had voted in favor of the proposition. The aldermen voted in favor.
Majority voted in favor of your motion.
Okay. I mean, everybody keeps asking me, I'm just trying to get, making sure I'm going to get this down, because it's changed.
Moving to Item G1, authorizing to fill the 2016 budgeted position for the Human Resources Director. Director Haley.
Thank you. At the October 26 City Council meeting, staff had requested to move forward on two intern positions, but to continue to hold off on filling the budgeted Human Resources Director position, with the intention of coming back in January after we've had six months' worth of activity for this budget season. So we did have the mid-year budget review earlier, which was included on the agenda, showing some positive conditions to the general fund at the mid-year point. Some additional positive items, just to note, from the Illinois Municipal League, their economic outlook added that, reflecting the improving labor market and economy in general, Illinois municipal governments have experienced relatively strong growth in major tax revenue sources during the first half of fiscal '16. Forecasts for 2017 are that economic growth will exceed that in fiscal year 2016. Continued healthier consumer spending is expected to remain the primary driver of economic growth, supported by further gains in personal income, high levels of consumer confidence, and looser lending standards. Consensus forecasts suggest that the trade sector will remain a major drag on the gross domestic product, albeit less than the previous year. The strong use dollar will contribute to continued soft exports for the U.S. In terms of the most significant measure of U.S. economic activity, the real GDP for 2017 is forecast to grow at 2.6%, which is slightly higher than the 2.4% original estimate for 2016. So this is very positive news. The inability still for the state to pass a budget has had minimal impact on the city. No revenues are being held up at this time from the state to the city. Income tax, local use tax, video gaming revenues, motorfield tax dollars have all been released, and the city is receiving these revenues monthly. We did show that our revenues are coming in right at about budget, with our expenditures projected to be slightly below our budget. Our fund balance is the strongest it's been in over 10 years. We're working continuously towards our 25% fund balance policy goal, ending in fiscal 2015 at 23.4%. The state of Illinois budget, the city still closely is monitoring pending legislation at the state level to stay abreast of any issues that may have an impact on the city. Being six months into our budget, the state still has not passed their budget, nor has there been any indication that is close to being adopted. Initially, you may recall, the governor proposed a cut to LGDF funds of 50%, or more commonly known as the municipal portion of state income tax. Recent discussion in Springfield's have not included anything regarding reduction in LGDF. The largest discussion, according to a representative from Metro West, is Senate Bill 318, which is pertaining to the property tax freeze. The city has dealt with this fact, that we believe this will most likely pass in the coming months, and formatted the tax levy to address Senate Bill 318 by restructuring their levy. So with the city's fund balance on the rebound, LGDF reductions off the table, the FY '16 revenues coming in at budget, and expenditures coming in below, staff is requested to move forward with hiring the Human Resource Director position. We feel this is a very important position. It was part of FY '16 budget discussions. Some of the items that this position was going to be dealing with was developing a comprehensive performance management process that includes collaborating performance on an annual basis, implementing a pay-for-performance system, developing a formal training program to ensure all legally mandated training, basic skills, professional development training, and technical training is planned and completed, develop a comprehensive talent management plan for the city, develop a formal corrective action process to transform employee performance, develop a comprehensive wellness program, and many other items. Until this position is filled, these projects have been and will continue to be delayed. Delaying the start of the Human Resource Director will delay the implementation, as well, of the performance management program. The process to fill the position would take about three to four months. So if authorized at the seasonings meeting, the position would be filled towards the end of April to May. Initially, community input was gathered through extensive discussions during the 2016 budget process, which included multiple joint City Council and Finance Advisory Committee meetings, as well as the public hearing on June 8. Staff also had several communications with the Illinois Municipal League and Metro West on the state's inability to pass a budget and the potential impact this has on the city. So based on this above information, staff is recommending the approval to move forward with the hiring of the Human Resource Director position. Originally, this was held off to be due to the lack of the state passing their budget with the potential LGDF reduction cuts. However, since LGDF reductions are off the table, the FY '16 revenues, again, coming in at budget and expenditures coming in below, we believe all these concerns for moving forward on this position have been abated.
Discussion from council. Alderman Noriko.
I have listened to the concerns of citizens regarding adding positions, but I have also listened to the, and reviewed the staff's listing of projects that would be undertaken by the Human Resources Director. And I believe that this position properly filled, the individual will be a leader within the administration and will be a leader for cultural change. And I think that is important. I think that implementing the performance management program and having that managed correctly will hold employees accountable and will continue to move the city forward. Implementing a full employee development program will ensure, well, nothing can absolutely ensure, but will help ensure that the city does not face legal action because of sexual harassment suits and so forth. Corrective action program that's clearly understood by supervisors and employees will have its own benefits and positive morale. And I know how much time those kinds of activities take. So, bottom line, I'm going to vote to approve the filling of the position. And I know that person will be worked hard.
Alderman Baker.
Kate, I think you've swayed me into something that needs to get aired. Between the long list of items that have to be taken care of, that's an extremely full plate. It almost sounds like a buffet. And we're in that classic position of, how can they ever get this done in a reasonable amount of time? And probably about 10 years ago, we had an alderman here who had his degree in human resources, and every single time that he got a chance to speak related to this subject, he indicated that we should be outsourcing HR. And having lived through the inevitable economy swing that we have to assume could happen again, the first position that was essentially eliminated was the HR. It was, and then the hat was refilled, half with the Assistant City Manager and half with, I think, the person that was in HR. It just seems to me that maybe for the short term, while we get caught up here, we need a specialized company to bring us up to speed. And hasn't, I didn't feel that way until just now, when I heard how important this position is to you, and listened carefully to how much farther we are behind. And I am concerned about having to pay for the legacy of this position. And we have filled every position that our city manager has asked for, and city manager was picked by the mayor, and we're backing everybody 100%, but maybe this is the time to draw the line and say, let's get caught up with a company that, we can test them with exactly that list, and when they get caught up, then decide if we want to fill that position with a in-house person.
Other discussion from council. Hearing Alderman Marquardt.
Sorry, just delayed in thinking. I've stated before, I guess, many times, that I was in favor of filling this position, mainly because that it is, it's the right thing to do for an organization of this size, to have somebody with the skill set onsite, invested in the employees in this community to ensure that our employees are the best that they can be. Outsourcing on this thing is like a, yeah, it's half a Band-Aid over the top of a gashing wound. Nothing against HR consultants from the outside, but that's not something that we need. We need somebody onsite who's doing the job and doing it correctly. That person's going to save us money down the line in so many ways. I have worked for companies that had bad HR, and it just destroys, it destroys the morale at that company. You end up with bitter employees. I've been at companies that you have good HR, and it helps your company, your organization, get through periods of... get through periods of controversy, periods of flux. And we should have somebody onsite so that we can move the city forward. It's a minor cost to improve the workforce of the city going forward. You know, it, yeah. To me, it's the only choice.
Other, Alderman Baker.
So the, the human resources position is a, it does have so much interaction with the employees and with the staff. And, you know, talking about our community, I'm wondering, does this position have a residency requirement?
There's, there's no residency requirement for this position, no.
Okay. Is there a reason why we don't have residency requirements for certain positions of salaries over a certain amount or in this, in this case, we're having a person develop policies for employees, both contract and, or I'm sorry, union and non-union contract employees that may or may not reside within the community that they're dictating these policies?
Traditionally, and I'll look towards the attorney to make sure that I'm quoting the code correctly, I believe the city requires city manager position, the police chief and the fire chief to live within the city. Beyond that, the current directors are not required to. I can speak to it as to some of the challenges that you face and I, and actually raising issues that a member of the community raised, a series of emails dating back, I don't know how many months ago. If you have residency, you're looking at, do you either look at the pool that you currently have or do you look at making it a requirement? You single out certain segments of, of the workforce because there's so many today dual income families that are out there. And I, I don't know how to say this delicately, so I'll just say it straight. I think it has a disparate impact on women in the workforce. It may impact, and I'm going to, I'm going to defer to an HR professional that's sitting down the council who has many more years of experience in relation to that, so that, that is a concern. But right now, I can tell you, you know, one of the things in our, our budget, we talk about best practices. If you look at many communities, communities, I'll use my position as an example, make a policy decision, do you have the city manager have a residency requirement? Some communities do, some communities don't. For those that do, when you look beyond that, typically where they look at is police and fire, is that you want your fire chief, your police chief to live locally so that when you have an emergency, that they're able to respond. So are there some communities out there that have residency requirements all the way to the far spectrum of having department directors? There are some, but then there's others at the other far end of the spectrum of not having any residency requirement for any of the, the senior management. So I think that's the best way I can explain it. I'll defer anybody else on the council to that.
Alderman Baker.
Well, when, when I, when I was elected 15 years ago, I do believe that just about everybody was required. When I say just about, the police and fire, their, their circle of residency over the years was expanded from, I'm going to guess from 12 to 18 miles. But the staff who were bringing forth recommendations for decisions for the council to then spend money were required to have a vested interest in this community and pay taxes. Or should we assume that they're going to own a home and they are going to pay real estate taxes and they're going to feel like this is more something they're bringing forward that they are going to have to explain to their neighbor? The argument that eroded this was exactly that, the dual income where maybe one person of the household worked in Naperville and the other person worked here and maybe they wanted to live halfway in between. Or during that period of time, maybe they wanted to be able to live here for four years and then the other community for four years. And that's how the council, one position at a time, gave it up. And that is probably the most common thing I hear in this community right now is, why don't you require everybody to live here? And I don't have anything but an embarrassment. I think everyone should live here that receives a city paycheck. I think they should be living here so they can spend money here and their, their sales tax dollars come back in to help that city budget. So I'd, I'd like to recommend that when you put this out, that you do it two-tier that will, will pay more money for somebody that lives in this community. And let's see what we get. I, I, because we have been down this before where we required a residency and then, and then on, on, I can't remember what position, but then the council in, was then asked, and this probably happened in closed sessions, I'll just speak metaphorically, if it were to happen, the council might be asked, hey, maybe we better listen up to that residency requirement and put it back out for another RFP. Let's just settle it all at once and say, in the RFP, that, that we might offer an additional bonus to be negotiated or annual salary to be negotiated that would be higher if, if they lived in the city limits. I'm just brainstorming right now, but if there's a second, then at least that's something that can be put out in the process.
Alderman.
I would be somewhat concerned having a two-tier structure like that, that we could be liable for disparate impact, you know, discrimination charges. Yeah, I'm, I have real concerns about that kind of proposal.
I just would want to add, I would be deficient if I didn't make this statement. Our executive team is comprised of those that live in the community and those that don't. And I have had the opportunity to work in some really stellar communities and with some phenomenal staff. And I would place our staff, our executive team heads and tails above any other community in which I've served, all due respect to those previous communities. So just because a staff member doesn't live in the community or does live in the community, they are all providing great service to this community. And I can tell you, I see firsthand the hours that they work, the dedication, being here way past 5:00 PM, working through lunches, working through dinners, working 12-hour days, working 14-hour days, working weekends. I get text messages sometimes when the fire chief's at a scene, dealing with calls during bitter cold. So I just want to be clear, not only for the council but for the community as a whole, it's a great team. They're dedicated to this community whether they live here or not.
Further discussion, Alderman Snow.
Yeah, I think I sort of want to echo that. I think the main criteria is quality. I mean, you want, you want to hire the best person available and the best person available, you know, rather than the person that's just going to live here. It would be nice if they lived here, but quality is, is more important. So unless the job actually requires it, I'd rather hire the best person possible. And I think the best person possible will save us money in the long run with training, as been pointed out. Proper training of employees can sometimes save a, a city hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in workman's comp claim because somebody screwed up or did something wrong or got injured because they didn't have the proper training for the job. So I do think it's an important position.
Alderman Harcourt.
And I think if I remember correctly, for years, the HR person in Sycamore lived in DeKalb and the DeKalb HR person lived in Sycamore. So we're going to make them, I mean, so I don't think that that so much matters. It's kind of a bigger community. You know, if you're going to have anything, it would be more of a regional, but yeah, I echo you, we'd be opening ourselves up if we made a requirement and a bonus for actually living here. That's something that would create red flags all over the place.
Other discussion? Bessie Cronopoulos.
While she's coming to the podium, I can't imagine any legal argument that would, would call discrimination to pay an, an employed position one set if, as long as they lived in DeKalb and if they wanted to live away, a differential. Because usually we're paying more for the people that live away by providing a car or transportation or...
I think Alderman Norreco's suggestion was that it would be some sort of disparate impact discrimination. And to establish that, you'd have to show that the result of the city's requirement had a disparate impact on some protected classification. That likely would be a challenging burden to sustain, I think. To your question on the residency or the past city ordinances, I, I don't have all the historical versions of it, but it's in section 3.46 of city code. And that section starts with all employees serving in emergency response positions hired or appointed on or after October 1st, 1977 are required to live within a residency area. So I'm not sure what positions were or were not considered to be emergency response positions. But the enumerated list now are, would be police, fire, IT director, and positions of that nature. So it's clear there have been a number of changes to that from 98 to 2004 to 2005, 2010, 2012. But I think that's the answer to your question.
Bessie.
It's an interesting comment, Alderman Baker, but, and I too have heard that comment from many people, but perhaps that's a, a discussion that the council can take up in a different format and discuss an overall policy at that point. My concern is specifically in regards to this ordinance, and I'm glad it was pulled because it's a second reading type of a, no, I'm sorry, that was the other one. I'm getting things confused too. I'm tired as well. Everything that's been said, and I can understand where Kate's coming from and where, where Michael is coming from, but we can't afford it. That's kind of the bottom line right now. And perhaps, given that we have a city manager and an assistant city manager who I am told has quite a background in HR, you do. That's what they tell me. And, you know, perhaps with their guidance and some consulting services, we can get to some of the top priorities that Director Haley has delineated for the council and work through that and get a few things done for less of a cost. And then, when you know that the budget is really solid, then look towards hiring. We, we just cannot afford it right now. We can't.
Thank you. Lynn Fosikis.
I, I personally don't oppose the hiring of a human resources director. However, you have to give somebody up for it. What Bessie says about us not being able to afford it, well, what, what you're doing, and I'm recalling how elegantly Tom Terzinski, the former alderman and the financial advisory committee member, who is eminently qualified to be, to, eminently qualified to have an opinion in this matter that should be respected. Expenditures rising 6%. Revenues rising 2%. And not all revenues are the same in this instance. The revenues that are rising are the ones that are coming from the state. The, the rest of the state is recovering, we're seeing some recovery. We're not seeing the same bounce back into Cal. And the reason that that is relevant is with the hiring that you're doing and the amount of money, I mean, and I, and I give everybody credit for these, these savings that have occurred. And that's great. It was kind of done with this in mind, I, I'm sure. That's, that's my perception. But...
Can you wrap up?
You're going to, pardon me?
Wrap up, please.
Sorry?
Wrap up, please.
What you have is you have something that will work for this year. You have something that might work for next year, but with the same staffing levels, you try to carry that more than a year or two out. And what you're really saying in view of the fact that certain other very important things that are important to people who live in the neighborhoods, such as a wholly, wholly inadequate road maintenance program, is that if you are budgeting this, you are saying that, you are saying yes to massive tax increases or another reduction in force, and it's not going to be very long before that happens.
Thank you, Lynn. John Anderson.
You're welcome.
Well, what, what upsets me the most is I thought we would have a hiring freeze. And previous years, the assistant manager took care of this and it was just one of his many duties. You've got police, fire, and ask me, that have their own representatives and they more or less take care of themselves. Now, they will have to go to human resources when it comes to checking on how much vacation time they've got left. And items like that, this could be done on the phone. And I can't see adding any more fat, we've gotten too fat already. And like, like Lynn said, we're going to, we're going to come to a point here like we went through not too many years ago, where we had let a lot of people go, we had to borrow over a million dollars to cover it. And the finance advisory committee advised against this. So we could, we could go ahead and do this and just end up like the state, only I don't think it'd be four trillion in debt. And I think you better start thinking about this. It'd be good to have nice people doing everything, but when you can't afford it, just drop it.
Thank you, John. Further discussion from council?
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I just address a couple of the points that were raised? Number one, I'd like to point out with Ms. Fosikis' comments in regards to finance advisory committee member, Tom Terzinski, that we're taking his suggestions to heart as far as some of the suggestions he made as part of the budget process last year. And one of the things we're going to try to do is to show revenues in a different light to be able to point out one-time revenues versus ongoing revenues. I know that was a point he highlighted in the budget, budget process. So we're going to try to be able to showcase that so both the committee and the council can see that and the community as a whole. I wanted also to point out about some of the savings that have taken place that we highlighted at the last meeting. So for those members of the community that weren't present, I would encourage you to look at last, last, from two weeks ago, the committee of the whole meeting, which will highlight all the efficiencies and the savings and cost reductions and different things that we've taken. That doesn't happen without talented staff who are bringing those items to, to fruition and moving forward. So many of those things that you see are directly related to the executive team members that were sitting here that came up with those efficiencies or those ideas or the way to reduce house insurance by $200,000 or offering new health insurance programs, which ultimately saves the city. I forget if it was like $137,000 or what was in the last memo. So it doesn't happen without having people who are focused on it. Can we continue the way we have been? Yes. It's more of a reactive style, not a proactive, and we're trying to transform from, from reactive into proactive. And the last thing I would want to comment, just for the community so they get an understanding of the scope of what, if you don't fill one position, that is not the overall solution for the, the street issue. I think what you saw tonight during the committee of the whole is our city engineer was able to present data from 1992. And if you looked at that during the lowest, I believe the least amount that was invested in streets was $300,000 one year and the most invested one year was a million and a half. And as an outgrowth of this meeting, one of the things I'm going to challenge him to do is I want to know what that average is over that 24-year period. So you, you see the investment of that $300,000 to $1.5 million range of the condition that the roads are in today. We've presented in previous conversations and previous meetings, and we're going to do this again during the budget process and present options to the council and seek direction and give you a direct correlation that if X dollars is spent on streets, what is that going to mean to how many streets can be repaired or, we're going to try to show it to you more graphically than we have in the past. Or we're gonna try to show it to you more graphically than we have in the past, so I haven't even talked to staff about this, so I'm not aware of some of the exhibits that would be coming down the line. But I wanted to put in the scope of, you know, that exhibit that city engineer Luskowski showed, which the $9 million amount, which for the sake of committee members or community members that weren't part of those previous discussions, that would be to keep our rating, to keep that rating not slipping. And I'm gonna look to Director Haley, I believe the fire department budget is approximately $9 million. So in order to, I think fire is $9 million and police is $12 million. If I'm wrong, you know, then my dollars are a little off. But in order to properly fund, you'd have to eliminate that entire department. So just in the scope of what does one position mean or one person mean? It's a big magnitude, and there's no simple answer to it. And it's, it's gonna be a process that we have to figure out as to how do we address this in the years to come? Are there baby steps we can take? Are there different strategies that we can use? And we'll look at everything and we'll, we'll connect the dots as to what it means if you go this option versus that option. So I just wanted to give some information to the community as far as all these other discussions that have taken place. So thank you for allowing me that opportunity.
Thank you. Other, Alderman Fanouk.
I certainly want to acknowledge the need for a human resources director. I do still have some concerns over the lack of state budget and the impact, not just on the city down the road, but also on our largest employer at Northern Illinois. It'd be great if the budget was passed. In all, I appreciate Director Haley's presentation of our current position and where we're at. And I still have some hesitation in my own mind about if this is a safe choice to make at this point. I guess that's really what I want to say, just have some hesitation about it right now, that's all.
I can give you the latest update, and I believe I've talked about this publicly, but what we hear from Metro West, which is our council of government, through their, the lobbyists that they hire on behalf of all the Metro West communities, is the earliest the state budget would pass would be after the primaries in March. That's one option, if they pass a single-year budget and they go back to July 1st of 2015. The other option that we're starting to hear in Springfield is a two-year budget that would be tied into May 31st of this year, so going forward. So the reality is, if the council were to wait on this item further, we're gonna be in our next budget discussion presenting that budget to you most likely before the state of Illinois passes anything relating to their current fiscal year. So keep that in mind, is that we will still be moving forward with, based on the direction from tonight, the next fiscal year's budget. We're gonna be preparing our second budget while they still haven't even done their first.
And I understand that, and I appreciate that. Director Haley, was I correct in hearing you to say that if we started this process tomorrow, that a target hire date would still be May 1, basically?
Yeah, it's about a three to four month process, so April to May timeframe.
All right, just a couple of quick follow-ups. Are we gonna use a search firm? Are we gonna do this in-house? What are your intentions?
We're gonna advertise, we're not gonna, not gonna use a search firm. We would advertise through the various HR resources that are out there, there's different professional organizations, so, no, so there's not that cost to hire, to use a search firm.
Since the timeline is likely to take that long anyway, would the staff accept the amendment the start date of no later, no earlier rather than May 1?
I don't believe there's presently a motion on the floor.
All right, well, I mean, all right, then, without an amendment, I mean, let me ask the question that way then. Would that, if we stated it that way, though, you'd be agreeable to that since that's what's likely to happen anyway?
Yes, I mean, we'd be bringing someone on, we would be bringing someone on board after that point, yeah.
Going through the process prior, is that right? Okay.
Keep in mind that when you think, okay, let's just talk through the process, today is January 25th. So assuming the council gave a green light, within a week or so, we would probably have a job announcement put together and posted, because we'd wanna have the announcement reviewed, we'd wanna have the job description reevaluated. Typically, we would post it for 30 days, so let's say about the month of February. So you're in the March, you're interviewing, you would then, I mean, we could make an offer contingent not starting till May 1st, but the reality is an offer could be extended in March or April, and then you would be doing background checks and reference checks.
Exactly, right. But I, you know, I still think that that...
But have the person know earlier than May 1st. We could definitely time, we could delay the advertisement to make that happen.
Counselor, you said there's no motion on the floor yet at all?
That's correct.
All right, then I'll, motion that we authorize to fill the budget position for human resources director with a start date of no earlier than May 1, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Nariko. Further discussion? I'll ask for... Sorry. Alderman, favor.
If we're waiting till May, I mean, what, what's the difference then in waiting till July 1st, the first fiscal year? Is there something...
Defer that to staff.
I know that this was like two-thirds budgeted, or... What would be, why, could we, if we're gonna delay till May 1st, can we delay till July 1st? Is there anything, any reason why we couldn't delay till July 1st?
You could pick whatever date. The longer you move it back, the, I mean, I guess it's the start date of when that person starts. From a time perspective, looking at what we've presented to the council, the biggest time issue is we want to be able to implement the performance management system. And I think we outlined the timing in the memo as to what that would happen. My concern is if you start moving it beyond May 1st, you're now, it's becoming a budgetary issue as part of the next budget process, because we, if I'm recalling the timeline that Director Haley is putting together that we'll be presenting to you, as staff is just starting now to work on the fiscal year, budget year, we would anticipate like last year, getting the budget to you late April, and we anticipate scheduling meetings in mid-May. We would follow the same protocols as last year. So asking that question on the spot, my biggest concern is then that clouds the discussion for the next fiscal year.
Alderman Baker.
Well, if, if this gets voted through and we don't outsource to get us caught up, we're limiting the applicants from around the whole country to possibly pick May 1st because I would venture to bet if they have children, they're, they're not gonna want to move here until July or August. Because then their kids are still gonna be in school, they're gonna be split from their home. I mean, I don't wanna pick, if we're, I mean, I'm hoping that we're gonna pick someone that is gonna wanna move into DeKalb and be here to raise their children and stay. I think we're limiting our pool.
Can I, may I address that? I think it would be unrealistic to expect anyone to move and not allow them a year to sell their home and, you know, be able to list it and get acclimated to the area and so on. So they would not be moving May 1st. They would be starting May 1st, and if that was the direction we wanted to go in, then we would allow them at least, what best practice in most municipalities, at least a year to relocate. And in most cases, it's even extended based on the market and, you know, the selling of their home and so on. So I don't think that's a decision they'd be making to move on May 1st.
And if I understand the motion, it's after May 1st, so someone may not be able to start until June 1st. I mean, I've, in my career, people have different personal obligations, professional obligations. So what I heard from the council is basically no sooner than May 1st, but it could be any date thereafter, after May 1st.
Right. Alderman, so...
Yeah, that's, the point I was gonna make is the motion as worded is not before May 1st. It could be any time afterwards, and I think once you find the best candidate, start date is one of the things you negotiate with.
Other discussion? I'll ask for a roll call.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Nariko?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouk?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carrying. Resolution 2016-8, approving of bar liquor license and video gaming license for CJ's Gaming LLC, doing business as CJ's, located at 1406B Sycamore Road. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Baker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Markort. Discussion?
Mayor, this is a proposed video game establishment located at 1406B Sycamore Road that'd be adjacent to the Flappy's Restaurant down the street from the Jewel. This establishment is configured as a, what's becoming kind of the quintessential video gaming model in the state, where they have the five machines. It is persons 21 years of age and older. They would have alcoholic beverage service, they'd also have light food service, and the applicant has successfully completed all of the required background and has received deposit recommendation from staff and the liquor commissioner.
Thank you. Alderman Baker.
I'm kind of of the opinion that if anybody wants to take a chance on DeKalb, we ought to welcome them. One curious thing that just crossed my mind, it's a shopping center, what is the parking requ, number of parking spaces required for this particular establishment per square foot, or how do you even do it?
I don't have, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I did look at it when the application came through, and there were sufficient spaces in the parking lot of that center. I would have to pull up the code and look at it for you, but I did look at it when it came through.
I would assume if you've got five machines, plus you have a place that people can sit, you must have to have at least five, I mean, sometimes things are required based on square footage. And let's say it's 1,000 square feet, but if you've got room for five people sitting down, you might need, what, 200 square feet? So you, for, I mean, how many spaces?
There's very limited seating in these, they're not, you don't get as many people in this type of gaming parlor as you do in, say, a restaurant that has a few machines in the corner. Excuse me?
It's gambling, not gaming. Gaming is video. It's gambling, let's be honest.
Well, my question would be, if you could just follow up, because I don't know if it's gonna be the last one we get. In fact, this may be the beginning of the floodgates right here. And that way I can just kind of, we can all file it away if you send it out to the whole council on...
I'll do that.
Which, since this one seems to be described as the quintessential model, I'll bet we see half a dozen of these in the next year.
We do already have more than one operating in the city. I would note that, to Director DeVita's point, our liquor license review process has been improved with that function, with the licenses being coordinated through finance are now being reviewed by all the city departments. So community development is reviewing them for zoning and parking and similar issues. So that process has, over the past year, improved in that regard.
Other discussion, questions? Alderman Baker.
Do we have, is there a plan on how many of these that we're gonna allow in the city of DeKalb? Is there like a saturation? That was one of the emails, had saturation rate, but I think we have 64 in the city right now. City four, 64 video terminals, I'm sorry.
There are 16 establishments licensed.
That's correct.
Yes, but I think the number's up to five per...
Yes, it's up to five machines per establishment by state law. There are 16 establishments and a total of 64 machines. So they range from three to five machines per establishment.
And is there any, is there a plan, like, we want up to 100, we want, I don't, it's not normally, it's not something personally I wouldn't normally support, but then also constituents also have contacted me as well, and is this the way we wanna collect our tax dollars?
I would just jump in and say that's a policy decision of the council. I don't believe in my tenure here, you've had that discussion of whether you want to put a limit either on the number of establishments or the number of machines. So if you do that, that is a policy decision for you to consider.
Alderman Baker.
Just for a little wisdom, once upon a time, there was the first Class A license, then there were four. Then I think it expanded a couple more, and all of a sudden, these licenses were trading for $150,000 in the gray market when they were intended only to be for that address and for that establishment, and they were floating around town, and it got to be crazy. And Dean, I wanna thank you again for making the liquor licenses and the ordinance so clear, crystal clear, by eliminating those 67, or whatever they were before that. I would hesitate to want to try to limit at this point anything. The marketplace is gonna put these places out of business if there's no market. I would, at this point, I would say that we don't wanna get involved in something where all of a sudden, we've created this false value of a particular license that might get moved.
Other discussion? I'll ask for a roll call.
Snow?
Yes.
Nariko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
No.
Fanouk?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carrying. Resolution 2016-9, authorization authorizing an agreement with American Printing Technologies for the outsourcing of utility bill printing services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Nariko. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Markort. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this item is a request for approval to outsource utility billing, billing printing services. And I wanna make sure I make that clear, this is strictly just for the printing of the utility bill, and it's not the outsourcing of the utility billing department. So residents, if they wanna pay their bill, can still come down to the front desk there and pay their bill, they can still call the utility billing department for questions or set up new accounts. So this is strictly just the printing of the bills, which is the last process of our bill run. So once we've read the meters, processed those bills, a file would be created, that file would more or less be emailed then to a printing company, and from there, those bills would be printed. And we see a lot of advantages with that. One being the fact that we currently print over 5,000 bills monthly in-house. And as we transition to every other month billing, which will happen here in the next couple of months, that number's gonna go from 5,000 to over 7,000 a month. So that's a little bit of a challenge for us to do that in-house. It'll also save time for the utility billing personnel. They have to monitor the printing process in-house, it's more or less kind of a babysitting issue. And the printer is located on the second floor here, and utility billing is located on the first floor. The folding machine is located in another office in the old police station. And that's actually intentional because the equipment is so noisy that it's disruptive if you have it in the same office as what those personnel are working. And so those are intentionally put in a different office, but it presents a challenge in the sense that when they are monitoring the printing and they're folding those bills, they're not doing their other jobs, so. We'll also have the ability to redesign the format of the utility bill and kind of update that. The current utility bill, I think, is a little bit confusing for residents, and I think we can kind of redesign that, and we have many options available to us to do that. And so we're looking forward to that. We'll also be able to provide billing inserts into the utility bill, which we don't have that ability now. So should the city wish to create a quarterly newsletter, that could be placed as an insert. If we wanted to give information regarding water conservation or preventing your water service lines from freezing, that type of information can be put in an insert, much, much cheaper than what we could currently send out that information. We'll also reduce or eliminate the future capital costs associated with the equipment that we currently have, which is the printer and the folder, which is probably roughly $20,000 to $30,000 to replacement costs on those, along with the service agreements that we currently have on those pieces of equipment. And so we've gone out for a RFP, we received three quotes back, the lowest quote being provided by Ameri- The lowest quote being provided by American Printing Technologies in the amount of thirteen thousand twenty dollars. And like I said, that's strictly for the printing of the bills. American Printing Technologies has worked with other communities, including Arlington Heights, Northfield, Grayslake, Lake Vanilla. Lake Vanilla, Lake Villa. And there's some others in, in your backup material, other communities that they've worked with. Also, American Printing Technologies has other clients that use the MSI software, which is our finance software. And so, that transition should be, should be somewhat seamless then for them. And we've estimated our current costs of performing those functions in-house at between about ten to fifteen thousand dollars. And that would be for the service agreements that we have on our equipment. Repair costs for those equipped, that equipment also, and then some personnel costs. It does not include the capital costs for replacing that equipment. And both of those machines are, are over ten years old, so they will be due for replacement soon. And I would be happy to answer any questions or.
Questions, Brian? Alderman Smith?
Will they also be mailing out the bills then after they print them from their?
Correct, yeah, I probably should have finished that. Once the file is sent to them, they'll print the bills, they'll, it'll be not stamped, but you know, automatically stamped, so to speak.
And usually those services also include a pre-sorting for the mailing, which, which makes the mailing more efficient. And sometimes even gives you a reduced cost with the post office.
Exactly what I was gonna say, then it would be sorted by them also, so that, that's a benefit to us. Right now, we print the bills here and then some city personnel, usually a, a water personnel will then take that, all those bills to the post office. Not, not a big issue, but you know, it's an extra twenty minutes or half an hour out of the day to, to take that there.
Other discussion? Roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markort?
I'm gonna vote yes, but the only other thing is to look at emailing the bills out in the future as opposed to doing the mailing, so, but.
Yeah, we actually do have the ability to email and maybe Department Head Haley could speak to that more than I could. But we do, we do have that ability.
Was that the question I?
Yeah, it was just a comment.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carrying. Resolution two thousand sixteen ten, authorizing the execution of a professional service agreement for consulting services with Janice A. Barlow and Associates for the completion of an operations feasibility, feasibility study of the Egyptian Theater in an amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars. Amending the FY sixteen, two thousand sixteen Egyptian Theater TIF agreement to reallocate funds. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Discussion? Patty, hop and step.
Yes, thank you. The city's FY two thousand sixteen TIF funding agreement with the Egyptian Theater allocated fifty thousand dollars for the completion of an operations feasibility study of the theater. And staff work with the Egyptian Theater Board of Directors and other theater staff, including Executive Director Alex Nierad, who is here to also provide information as needed. And then with City Council's direction at, which was presented at a COW meeting first on November ninth, two thousand and fifteen, Council gave direction to staff to move forward with the request for proposal, RFP process, which was then sent out on November tenth, two thousand and fifteen, after the, the COW meeting. The city received seven qualified responses to the RFP and interviewed three consultants on January seventh, two thousand and sixteen. And the interviews were conducted at the theater with members of city staff, with members of the theater board, as well as Executive Director of the theater, Alex Nierad. The city staff is recommending that Janice A. Barlow and Associates is, is approved and move forward to complete the study at a cost not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars. And a copy of that professional service agreement is attached for review. Staff anticipates returning with a draft report in about May of two thousand and sixteen and then a final report June, two thousand and sixteen. In addition, staff is also recommending that the city's FY two thousand and sixteen TIF fund agreement with the theater be amended to reallocate funds from their capital expenditure to cover the five thousand dollar cost difference of the study from what originally was budgeted for with, of the fifty thousand dollars. And a copy of the updated agreement, which would be necessary, is also attached. So, increasing the operating potential of the theater was identified as a transformational project and included in the FY two thousand and sixteen budget as a result of the TIF phase-out discussions. Both the downtown revitalization plan of two thousand and seven and the city center plan of two thousand and thirteen referenced the value of the Egyptian theater to the overall economic viability of the downtown, recognizing its value as a significant cultural and entertainment draw to the downtown and as a major asset in attracting patrons in the area. So the purpose of the operations feasibility study is to identify a sustainable operating model that achieves the mission, culture, programming, and financial goals of the organization. Performing a study to determine how to profitably operate the theater would answer many of the questions that occur regularly and are asked by the council members during the, in the theater's annual funding request and considered by councils. And such questions, why are, why are we putting so much money into a building that we don't own? Why isn't the theater profitable? Or what is the plan for the theater moving forward? That's the answers, those types of answers would be provided as a result of the feasibility study. So the RFP approved by the city council that was distributed November tenth focused on various areas of the study. And, you know, there included an executive summary and then specifically five areas, including ownership and management of the Egyptian theater. And at this point, I'd like to, you know, transition to why Janice Barlow and Associates. I mentioned that seven RFP responses were received and that three were interviewed. The three organizations that were interviewed besides Janice Barlow and Associates all came in comparable to the cost for Janice Barlow and Associates. One organization, which primarily focused on convention sporting and entertainment facility consulting, but had some theater experience, is located in Chicago. And with expenses, their cost came in at fifty thousand. Another company out of New York also interviewed with the panel. And their proposal was forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars plus an additional seven thousand five hundred dollars for expenses, which is for the fifty-five thousand, which the Janice Barlow and Associates proposal is also at fifty-five thousand with expenses. So that includes travel and so on. And Janice Barlow and Associates is located in Canada. However, Janice Barlow was selected by the panel and the committee because she and her firm have the most extensive knowledge in the field of working with historic theaters. The proposal submitted by this firm had the most impressive approach to the project, had a good understanding of the project expectations, and expressed the most genuine interest in this project. The firm has provided arts consulting work for two hundred clients in North America. The local selection committee was unanimous in recommending this firm after conducting the in-person interviews. And all, as I mentioned, the fifty-five thousand does include the travel, which not all the firms did. We feel confident that Janice and her team will provide an extremely detailed and accurate report that specifically addresses the historic Egyptian theater. Furthermore, Janice stated that her report will provide detailed action steps to implement the suggestions that are made as a result of her firm's analysis and that she will be available after the conclusion of the study. For her, because of her genuine passion for seeking, ensuring that the theater's success would flourish. So, not only is she in this for the study, she's really invested in ensuring that the project is successful and will be available to us if needed, ongoing, as we implement the results of the project. So, the three key team members with the firm would be Janice herself as the principal consultant. And Janice has thirty-eight years of experience consulting on studies and projects oriented to design, restoration, and management of theater facilities specifically. Her practical experience has a full range of technical, artistic, and administrative roles in theater prior to becoming a consultant. So her firm actually has experience with administering, running in a, a theater, which I think will be immensely helpful i- in this process. Her clients have included governments and, and their agencies, arts and heritage groups, private foundations, real estate developers, and theater producers and proprietors through the United States and Canada. She has served on the Board of Directors for the League of Historic American Theaters. She's presented at their annual conferences multiple times. And she is a recipient of the prestigious Outstanding Individual Contribution Award in two thousand and eight. And she truly is known as an expert and respected so in the industry as it relates to historical theaters like our Egyptian theater. Another team member, Dulce Gilmore, would be a consulting associate, has forty years of experience successfully operating historic theaters, including within the Chicagoland area. For instance, the Chicago's Auditorium Theater, the Oriental Theater, the Erie Crown Theater and McCormick Place, the Skyline Stage at Navy Pier, and the Paramount Arts Center in Aurora, which she has extensive experience with. She has served on the Board of Directors for the League of Historic American Theaters, presented at their annual conferences multiple times, and is also recipient of their prestigious Outstanding Individual Contribution Award in two thousand and twelve. Dulce is also a graduate of Northern Illinois University, and she is extremely excited to come back to this area and work on this project and help us, help the Egyptian theater continue to be successful. And finally, the third member, which not all firms had, an architectural consultant as part of their team. So we saw that as something unique. Kylis Almond has thirty-eight years of experience in the field of historic prevention and cultural resource management, which includes theater design and consulting, adaptive reuse, restoration, renovation, feasibility studies, and master plan development. He's served on numerous boards and on over forty theaters across the North America. And he has presented, again, multiple times for the League of Historic American Theaters annual conference as a recipient of their prestigious award in two thousand and nine. So, as a selection team, and after reviewing all of the RFPs that were submitted, from the seven, narrowing it down to the three, meeting with them one-on-one, and we did an extensive in-person interview process where they, each consultant had to do a presentation of their sample work, of what they would do with those proposal, how they were presented, as well as a numerous and over an hour of questions that we asked specifically to each of the three companies. After all that, we are confident that Janice Barlow and Associates is the best consultant for what we are trying to achieve.
Thank you, Patty.
Alex, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Questions, discussion from council? I'll ask for a roll call then? Oh, I'm sorry, there were public comments. Val C.
Alex, no matter what I say here, I'm still gonna be working on the grants, so. I, I, I'm, I had always thought that as part of the RFP process, that council would, and I'm glad that Patty answered some of these questions, I did pose them, so obviously maybe these were shared with you, which is good. I always thought that as part of the RFP process, that the council, that who was proposing, who submitted proposals and the costs, that the council would be getting all of that information so that the council can kind of pick and choose. Because after all, it is tax dollars, and that's generally how these kinds of decisions are made. During this process, was Landmarks Commission in any way, shape, or form connect, contacted? Believe it or not, we do have people locally that are quite expertise in historical preservation. Were any past people who were involved in, in PET communicated with, as part of this vetting process? Because local participation in investigation could very easily perhaps come up with some of the same conclusions. We have resources here locally. Debbie Armstrong did a phenomenal detailed information sheet a while back. Springfield has historic preservation agencies, and as I mentioned before, the Landmarks Commission, other local entities. All of these could kind of come together in a blue ribbon committee and do some of this vetting without costing the taxpayers fifty-five thousand dollars for somebody from Canada, out of the country even. I understand they're probably terrific, and that's great, but fifty-five thousand dollars? One of my concerns is that many citizens view the expenditure of tax dollars on studies as a waste, and this expenditure could impede future fundraising for our theater. As one person told me, and others have echoed this pretty much the same quote, "We've known that this theater is an asset for about forty years. Isn't that why we spent money to restore it in the first place?" Now, the other thing that I have to say is procedural. Most likely, you're gonna pass this, it doesn't matter what I say, you know, I just, that's okay, I'll keep on saying it. All I can do is give my opinion. But you have two items, again, in one resolution. One is to award the contract, and the other is to change the budget. Guys, that should be separated. Those two things should be separated, they're two different actions. At least do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. John Anderson?
Well, what Patty said was real interesting. It sounded like there were some real people that really were involved in this type of work. My only question is, this TIF money is gonna run out in a few years. So, what is it gonna take for a audience to even break even on this? I mean, this is just, we're out here in Corncob County when we're lucky to have a hundred thousand people in this county. Whereas in these theaters in the Chicagoland area, they don't have, they can get on the bus and go to the theater. This is, this is, this is my question. We can't be feeding this tax money forever. And you just don't realize, these poor people that had to lock the door and leave town, they probably lost a lot of their own money, and they just, they just didn't take enough money in to even break even. I was gonna suggest you may do an audit internally and see just as, as the way it sits right now, do you take in enough money to even break even? right now, do you take in enough money to even break even or come close to it? You're subsidized at least for $25,000 that I know of every year from the City of DeKalb, and that's going to dry up. It's a beautiful theater, I spent many hours in there. But here again, it's the cost just to keep the thing open. And you got to continually be taking care of any building. Can't let it get like Otto's. He's going to save a little money, he turns the heat down and the sprinkler line busts. It's a solid building, but it needs a ton of work before anybody could move in and make it viable. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Discussion, questions from council? Roll call.
Baker?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you, motion carried. Resolution 2016-11 appropriating $120,000 in motor fuel tax funds in order to fund the preliminary design engineering services for the coordinated traffic signal upgrade program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Markort, a second.
A second.
Seconded by Alderman Faber. Discussion, city engineer.
Evening, mayor and city council. This item is before you, kind of in tandem with the one below it on the agenda. This request is simply the appropriation of $120,000 that was budgeted in the beginning of the fiscal year for the purpose of preliminary engineering associated with the coordinated traffic signal upgrade project. So I can probably give you a little background or update on where we're at with the project that will be germane to the next agenda item. So the purpose of the coordinated traffic signal upgrade project was to provide more efficiency on three of our main corridors throughout the DeKalb region. So that's Route 38, Route 23, and Annie Glidden Road. And the intention was to make these three corridors more efficient for motorists passing through town, so, or going from one end of town to the other, I should say. So the thoughts is that there's going to be an opportunity to save money just with the amount of fuel that you'd be spending idling at a traffic signal or station area, and saving the time that it takes you to get from place to place. So essentially, the first part of this agenda item is simply the allocation of the money that's been budgeted for the preliminary engineering services for this project.
And I guess I'll just add, as a result of a question I did receive earlier, the way this project started was back in 2010. It was identified that the coordinated traffic signals were having difficulty communicating with each other. So there's areas in town where there's fiber optic cables, there's areas where it's copper wire, and then there's areas where there's copper wire, but instead of being buried, it's overhead. So it's a conglomerate of various ways of communicating these, between these signals. The engineer at the time identified this as a project that would, could be funded through DSAS, the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the region. As such, he put this project forward to that committee. At that time, he estimated the project would be about $1.2 million. And the nice thing about putting the project through this committee is that the project becomes funded 80% of what they have called STU dollars, which is federal funding from the Surface Transportation Urban Fund, and then a 20% match is required for the construction from the city. So essentially, what this is, is the $120,000 that we're requesting tonight is going to perform the preliminary engineering design for this construction project that is going to be funded 20% or $240,000 from the City of DeKalb and $960,000 from the federal government. So.
Questions of John? Alderman Faber.
So this is a, this is going to design the system, the traffic system, and that's what the later project is, to install that system?
This is the design that determines how we approach the construction. And what this design is going to do is going to tell us, is it more cost-effective to replace some of these copper wires with fiber? Is it going to be more effective to replace the innards of these controllers to an upgraded new technology that will communicate better over whatever mode of communication they have to talk about? It's going to analyze the potential for using, for procuring and installing a central management system, so a central point where all this information can then come back to. As part of the scope of this work, what we were asking is, as part of the design, we want this consulting engineer to establish a foundation or a platform from which we can then grow from. So if there is available technology in the future, that makes sense. So perhaps we run fiber to all the traffic signals, then that gives the opportunity to potentially put cameras up there that may be able to relay information to the police department or give us better information on how traffic patterns are actually occurring. It will give us the idea, the ability to potentially time the signals or retime the signals after a special event occurs. So if there's a parade downtown, we have the ability to acknowledge that there's a parade downtown, and maybe the traffic signals in that area need to be adjusted for that small period of time. So although the actual timing of the signals will not be within the scope of this project, this project lends itself to the potential of that. So at the end result, we should see a slightly more coordinated traffic signal system that allows motorists to get from one point to the next of town in a more efficient manner.
And that, John, is actually the next action before us.
The next action, then, yeah, it's going to go into the award of the RFP. It's going to.
For the actual design. This is just moving the motor fuel dollars.
Right now, this is allocating the motor fuel dollars for that project. If the city council chooses not to allocate the funds, the next item probably doesn't matter a whole lot. But if the city chooses to allocate the funds, then the next item, we would select the, or you'd hear the recommendation for that firm.
Other questions, discussion? Alderman Baker.
Clarification, the $120,000, is that half of the $240,000, or are we going to do $240,000 on top of the $120,000?
That's right. It's going to be $240,000 on top of that $120,000.
No problem, thanks.
Roll call.
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carried. Award of a contract to Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the design and implementation of the coordinated traffic signal upgrade program in amount not to exceed $120,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Fanoukun. Thank you. Discussion or questions? We pretty well discussed this tied in with the previews.
Yeah, I just have a little bit to add. I can explain, the process for this RFP is very similar to the other ones we went to with the added addition of, we scheduled a meeting with each of the candidate firms to go out and inspect our system. So each one of these firms, before they submitted their proposal, had a tour of the existing system and was able to better understand what our system looks like and how they can tailor their solutions to the needs of the City of DeKalb. That being said, we interviewed three companies, Kimley Horn, Sam Schwartz, and Christopher Burke Engineering. We found that through the interview process as well as evaluating the proposals and their assessment of the existing system, that the solution that Christopher Burke Engineering proposed to us seemed to be a little bit more thorough and comprehensive, and they had a little bit more experience working their way through the bureaucracy at the state government level. So we're very comfortable utilizing them as a consulting engineer on this project. Additionally, they do have previous experience in the City of DeKalb, working with the traffic signal system as well. What I wanted to add, that I think is a little bit exciting about this project, is we researched a little bit more about the traffic signals and the process by which, the best way to start moving forward with the design process, and we consulted the American Society of Civil Engineers website and saw a webinar about projects similar to this that have occurred throughout the country. And what they recommended and what we're going to proceed with is an outreach-type project on the city website. So what we would be requesting is going to be maybe a one or two-question-type quick survey and just getting the input from residents of their experiences on the corridors, where they've had trouble, the times of day they've had trouble, or particular incidents or intersections that they were having problems with. And this is all information that we did run past the consulting engineer, and he thought that that was also valuable information and was happy that we would be collecting that information for him to look at. So that's all I had to add.
Questions of John? Roll call.
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, motion carried. Next item is public viewing of the draft of Community Development Block Grant, Year Two Annual Action Plan and Budget, Year 23. Is there, what, we just need a review?
Well, the main, the main element of tonight's item on the agenda is to inform the public that the document is up for public viewing. It's been on the website since the 15th. It's been at the library since the day they opened, it's been here in City Hall, and there's a 30-day window for public comment. Joanne Rouse and I are still contacting local agencies to ascertain input, and we've been doing so, it's a continual process throughout the whole year as we monitor recipients. But the public hearing will be here on February 8. So the main purpose of the item tonight is inform people that the document's available and ask the council to set the public hearing on February 8. The public can comment at that hearing, they can send emails or written comments between now and then. The plan itself is similar to past plans. It's got four main goals related to public facilities, public services, program administration, and then housing rehab programs. We'll also be discussing this with many of the social service agencies at this week's Continuum of Care meeting on the 27th, the Networking for Families meeting tomorrow, and then the city's HRC Commission will discuss it at their February 2 meeting.
Okay. So the public viewing period, Ellen, is January 15 through February 14.
Correct. And then we will submit a draft plan to HUD on the 15th, a week after the public hearing. And then it will still remain in draft until we receive the final appropriation dollars from HUD. And they're running behind this year as they did last year. But once we have the final dollars, we'll bring it back to you for formal approval.
Okay.
Okay.
Ellen, thank you, and Joanne for preparing the draft block grant and getting it in public view. Okay, moving to communications. Alderman Fanoukun.
No report.
Alderman Markort?
No report.
Alderman Snow?
No report.
Alderman Noriko?
Of course, I have something to say. The opening of the library was wonderful. It is truly fantastic. Also, I sat in on a panel discussion, the chief Lowry participated in on nonviolence. It was really thought-provoking, and I hope everybody comes to the library. And you're a better library patron than I am because I always have books overdue.
Alderman Baker?
No report.
Alderman Faber?
No report.
Okay, city manager?
Only item is I would recommend at this late hour to forego executive session tonight, and we will bring that item back to you in February.
Okay, thank you. City attorney?
No report.
City clerk?
No report.
Assistant city manager?
No report.
Chief Lowry?
I think you've heard enough from me, no report.
Finance director, Haley?
No report.
Chief Hicks?
No report.
Director Davida?
No report.
Director Alderman. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, there is, there is one thing that I forgot to mention, that this Friday night is the first National Bank Challenge between DeKalb and Sycamore. I'd urge residents to go out and support the DeKalb High School teams as they take on the art tribal Sycamore Spartans.
Thank you, Bill. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Markort, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Curated. Alex.